13th, 2021 Board of Education meeting to order. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Legner?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
Mr. Paulson and Ms. Darlene Boa?
Here.
Here. Mr. Spencer, will you lead us in the fudge?
Yes.
Tonight, we're starting back our tradition of having a host school, even though we are, even though we're always having our meetings at Hubble. So, Principal Craig, would you please come to the podium and share with us?
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Schuler and Senior Leadership Team. It really is exciting to get back to the tradition about our schools. First, we'd like to thank you, each and every one of you, so much for all of your time and dedication and all of the support that you've given us in all the work that we do, especially over the last year and a half. It's my complete privilege to be here tonight to represent the staff, students, and parents of Washington School. There are not words to express how proud I am of the Washington staff, from remote learning in spring of 2020 to all of, everything that has led us back to now, being back full day with our students in person. They've been flexible, innovative, and always student-centered. Our parents and PTA have been remarkable supportive partners in this journey, offering us words of encouragement, thanks, and reaching out to help in so many ways. It's been great to see the return of some of our PTA community events this year, like Ice Cream Social, Nights on the Run, and enrichment programs like Art Smart and Battle of the Books. Most importantly, our students have continued to put smiles on our faces every day. They're the reason for all that we do, and they have impressed us with their resilience and their joyful energy. Tonight, I have a video to share highlighting three learning experiences at Washington. We are very thankful for the addition of more club stipends at the elementary level. This gives students more opportunities to connect and to explore their interests. We currently have a second-grade art club, a fourth-grade Earth Club, a fourth- and fifth-grade Student Council up and running, third-grade Animal Lovers Club will get started soon, and in the spring, we will have an after-school running club. The video tonight will highlight the student experience of Earth Club. Secondly, we'd like to share a couple ways we've been using our one-to-one Chromebooks to enhance and personalize the student learning experience. Classroom teachers have been partnering with our library director on research and inquiry projects. In addition, our director has also taught lessons on digital citizenship to students in grades two through five at the beginning of the year. Our last highlight will be social emotional learning. The Washington staff has done a lot of intentional work this fall to reestablish routines with students, teach behavior expectations, build community, and integrate SCL throughout the school day. The video will show highlights from a first-grade lesson. We hope you enjoy your window into our days at Washington.
Hello, Earth Friends! About to dig in the garden?
Yeah!
All right, I'm so excited because this is the day where we need to take out certain things that don't belong in the garden anymore. We've been doing a lot of cleaning, and I'm going to make sure we get the gardening mats cleaned because they're kind of ready for the strike.
We're looking for worms to put back in the compost bin so they don't freeze over the winter, and we're also looking for pastings which are worms and eggs, and the eggs are forming, so they can turn into worms. And we're putting them back in the compost bin so they don't freeze over the winter.
One thing that's really cool about Earth Club is we got a garden of lavender, and when I go home, me and my mom make that garden.
I was so excited about the Earth Club that I decided to go home and plant my own carrots and tomatoes.
I pick tomatoes, and I pick them together, and my mom makes some pasta with them. I also like them because we can make anything with them. My family likes to eat them as snacks, and I love to chew them to my mouth because she loves to eat them, and they're kind of like a treat.
I really like going around in the gardens and harvesting the things that are ripe. They're really yummy, and we get to learn new things, and I get to get my hands dirty.
I am thankful for the opportunity to just work with Earth Club this year. It gets me to learn a lot about being a parent of the Earth, and they get to learn how to have your own gardens at home. It's been a wonderful experience for the kids to get to have time together. This year, we get to actually have this all different green, different corporate classrooms, and they all have the opportunity to spend time together, and we collaborate with more people about all sorts of different things. Okay, so the last step of our inquiry project is working with creative and online story work to be able to show what we know. So here we get to collaborate with your peers on the video and the platform. We're going to get to make videos with each other to demonstrate to each other what's learned, what's been done, and what we can do to improve our performance. Sound good? Awesome.
What I've been thinking about when you create your video practice is, I want to be thinking about being a good digital citizen. You're creating something, and you're going to accomplish your video.
This year, we've talked a lot about being a good digital citizen, like how to communicate with others online, and also talk to a trusted about when something's not happening or you feel uncomfortable offline. We also learned when to share personal information and when not to share personal information.
One way that we use Chromebooks this year is to create a genre of videos to show what we like. This year, we have used our Chromebooks to collaborate with others and to do inquiry projects to show our learnings.
We use Chromebooks a lot this year to access databases to conduct research and find important information.
This week, we talked about how we identify the level of a problem. Some problems are difficult problems, they're small problems. You share with me some small problems that you had in your life before, and then some problems are much bigger, they're all communal problems. You've also shared with me some ideas, some bigger problems that we've had in your life. We've talked about the different kinds of reading skills you can use to help you manage these big uncomfortable emotions. We practiced the lazy ape reading, which is a favorite of your guys', and today, we're going to talk about making a self-talk phrase. Self-talk is something you might say to yourself in your head, or maybe even guide you out how to manage your uncomfortable feelings. So today, you're going to write a short sentence that you might say to yourself when you have an uncomfortable feeling.
My self-talk phrase is, "It's okay, just stay calm."
My self-talk phrase is, "Just take it easy, it's gonna be okay."
My self-talk phrase is, "I can do this, I am strong."
Here's my self-talk phrase, "I am strong, I am smart, I am brave, I will be okay, I am calm."
Thanks again for all that you do and for supporting everything, and I hope that brought a smile to your eyes.
Any questions or comments for Mrs. Craig? Thank you, it was great to see kids, especially the outdoor activities, the new clubs and stuff that you have, that opportunity for them. Thank you. Okay, are there any modifications to the agenda? Okay, hearing non-presidents' report, I just have a few things to share tonight. I had the opportunity to represent the board at the dedication of the new sign outside of Johnson, I believe that was last week, that was very exciting. Today was the council, PTA Council breakfast, and I was able to represent us there today. I counted, it was my 17th PTA Council breakfast that I've had the opportunity to attend in this district. Today, if, I know last meeting, we talked about possibly, you know, hitting some of our adopted schools, so if you have, when we have other board member reports, if you could share, if you've done, been able to do so, I wanted to share, I had two visits. I was able to, since our last board meeting, attend Pleasant Hill, and I had the opportunity to walk the building, go into classrooms, see just the really creative, innovative things that our teachers are doing to bring students back, connect with students. I got to dance with kindergartners in the classroom as they were learning how to count to 20. It was, it was the highlight of my day that day. And last week, I had the opportunity to go to Franklin, and again, walk the building, see some really great learning. I was in one of the classrooms I was in, they were playing Kahoot, and it was just really exciting to see them get so excited. Lots of group work, that's what, I walked away with both of my visits feeling like they were back, they were doing their group work. It was really good to see, see student learning. So, that's all that, that I have in my board report. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mrs. Scraptry. So, just a couple of things that I wanted to share with the board under my report tonight, and I don't usually do this with a set of slides, but because part of my superintendent report is also going to incorporate an update on some of our COVID metrics, as I've shared in the past, I just put a few slides together. So, just want to start with a couple of celebrations, recognitions for the board. Since our last meeting, one of the major organizations that annually does a set of school district and school rankings, NISH came out with her 2022 ratings. District 200 as a whole received an A-plus rating from NISH. All of our individual schools received an A-level ranking. Our two high schools in particular also received A-plus ratings. Those ratings are based on academic measures of success, as well as feedback from students and parents that gets incorporated. They evaluate a number of areas, including not only academics, but student life, clubs, food, the quality of the facilities itself, what we invest in education of our students. So, again, certainly something I wanted to share with the board and the community. Mrs. Craig mentioned under her report from host school today, she shared a few of the student clubs at Washington. We had an opportunity to meet with our elementary principals yesterday, and actually, that's a pretty consistent trend that we've seen across our buildings. So, the new clubs and opportunities that the board invested in as part of the plan moving into this year have been very, very well-received, and engagement levels have been very high. A number of our buildings have started parent-teacher conferences. We're in that, that window of time. We are offering both the traditional in-person parent-teacher conferences, but also offering virtual options for conferences, and the buildings that have already been through that have reported or shared that parents have been appreciative of that choice, that opportunity to, to attend a conference in either format, and have been well-received. Wanted to mention two engagement opportunities that we have coming up. Two weeks from tonight, on October the 27th, instead of the committee, the whole meeting, we're going to be doing an engagement opportunity on our Portrait of a Graduate work or, or project, an invitation should have hit mailboxes in the last day or two for that opportunity, and we're going to continue to communicate that. The format of that engagement opportunity is going to be tabletop discussion style, so there will be a presentation at the onset that just really sets the stage for what is a portrait of a graduate, how are we seeking to balance, certainly, the core academic learnings in disciplines that have always been a part of the experience with some of the future-ready skills that very much are important. And we want to make sure we get some feedback from the community as we continue to work on that project. And then a week later, on November the 3rd, we have a parent workshop that's also going to take place here at Hubble in the auditorium called Creating a High Performing Mindset. So, focus very much is going to be on mindset, but helping both students and parents think about how we create that high-performing mindset. And then finally, just a quick reminder that Friday, October the 29th, in Illinois is Principal's Day in the state of Illinois, so for your adopted schools, that'll certainly be a, a great day to, to reach out and, and just thank or recognize our principals who we are very, very much proud of in the district and appreciate the work that they're doing. So, I'm going to move into our COVID data update and run through the, the slides that you saw last go-round. Start, as we did last time, with just our current new cases. So, this is, this week, as of, I think, 12 o'clock today, we, we cut this off, so we've had 13 new cases this week, two staff cases, 13 student cases, two staff cases across the bottom. You can see the, the week-by-week summary, and since the beginning of the year, you see that we've kind of floated up and down, kind of in the, in the mid-20s range each week, which is pretty consistent with where we are this week. Cases per 100,000 has also been relatively consistent, kind of floated up and down, I think, as of yesterday, we're about 138 cases, I believe, or 130 as of yesterday. Today, I think it bounced up just a, a little bit, cases per 100,000. Similar data to what you just saw in terms of, of cases this week, I think I repeated a slide, so you already saw this, but that's cases for this week. On our, our public dashboard, so as the, the board is aware, we've added a feature on our dashboard, which is a daily snapshot of cases. So, in addition to keeping cumulative cases per week each day, we do a daily snapshot that includes both cumulative cases for that particular week, as well as close contact, in-school close contact in particular, and we break out in and out of school. This, I think, has, has been probably one of the, the more promising trends that we saw. In just a few minutes, I'll share with you an update on the Test to Stay protocol that the board did give us the okay to implement your last meeting, and again, what you see from early in the year, when we were at a peak of about 117 students that were quarantined as a result of an in-school close contact, you see a steady trend down. We're down to two students as of today who are, are quarantined for an in-school close contact. We have moved 14 students into the Test to Stay protocol, so these were students that were in-school close contacts, and we opened up the opportunity for tests to stay. Nine of the students have actually completed the Test to Stay protocol, so that means they've tested on the four required days. We have five students that are currently still in the protocol, and to date, we have not had a, had a positive result from any of those tests. Vaccination status, so I'll share with you both our, our projected partial and fully vaccinated status, so middle school, we're up to about 51%. And just a reminder, this is data that is reported out of the Illinois Department of Public Health database, so we're able to pull ZIP code data by age level to, to pull this together. So, we're about 51% at the middle school level, that's of all middle school students, and 76% at the high school level. Fully vaccinated, we are at 45% at the middle school level, and 70 at the, the high school level. And then, just two final things that I wanted to, to mention, so this year, anytime that we have two cases that are linked within the, the same building, or two cases that, that happen within the same building, we are required to do an internal outbreak investigation to determine if there is any epidemiological link potentially between those two cases. So, within the district, we do have a protocol that each time we have those two overlapping cases within a single school, we do look at any potential point of connection between the two students. So, we look obviously at physical distancing, is there any point of connection within a classroom, within a setting outside of the classroom? We do look, especially when we rise above two cases, at any other potential mitigations and gather information. Since the beginning of the year, we have done 59 of those investigations for overlapping cases, and none of the close contacts were, were deemed to be as a result of contact within the school environment through our own investigation. But again, we continue to, to do that every week. And then, finally, I just want to, want to share that we continue to run the MIT tool each week as, as we look at what we're experiencing, both cases per 100,000, our vaccine rates and information, and do continue to sit above that 18-hour threshold, which is where we were at the, at the lowest point last year. So, that is the, the green check mark that sits above there. So, that is your monthly update on, on COVID data. Again, really, the only thing new this week is the update, or this month, is the update on tests to stay that wasn't there last time, and then we added the, the fully vaccinated status as well. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Schuler?
I have one.
Yes?
I can probably look into this later, but just while we're on the topic, I'm interested in the A-plus rating we received, knowing that it includes a variety of data points that all have lots of reasons to believe are quite high. I'm wondering how much academic test scores feed into that to keep it, keep it at such a high rating when some of our scores are not quite that high?
Yeah, so, a, a big part of that is, is academic, which is, is test score. So, I think in, in the state, that piece is test score relative to other school districts. So, while I think you have heard at the board level some concerns over the way that Illinois in its cut score kind of deems a, a grade-level cut score, they set a very, they, they set a very high target for, for meeting that grade-level standard piece, so our test score certainly relative to our comparable districts, I think, remains strong and, and factor into that. Actually, I think of the criteria, probably the, the one area, there are actually two areas where I think we, we tend to see lower ratings within the, the individual areas. One of them is food, food, and that, that is just based on student feedback, although our food rating, I think, actually went up a little bit over the, the last go-round, and then the second actually is in facilities, which I think they based on, based on dollars spent in facilities, and, and we're catching up certainly in that metric over the work we've done for the last couple of years, but those tend to be the two lower areas that we see. Academic, student life, clubs, student activities, all areas that are very high teachers, ratings on teachers.
So, like, academic achievement gaps are not factored in?
No. Nope.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Schuler?
I have a couple, but I want to follow up on what Mary was just talking about. So, do we have any, and I, and I looked, of course, sort of at the readings, is there kind of a percentage of how much of that is subjective in terms of, I know that student and parent feedback is included in that scoring? Like, is there a, like, a third of that is subjective, or, like, in that overall A?
Yeah. I'd be happy to get you a deeper dive into, to that. I, I don't know the exact percentage that's calculated based on the feedback relative to the, the test score. In the academic achievement area, that is strictly scores, that I know is, is scores and scores alone. So, each of the, each of the criteria area has a slightly different breakdown over what is composed in that individual rating.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have some questions about the Test to Stay and how that's going. I just want to, it wasn't quite clear, if a student is in the Test to Stay program, are they permitted to ride the bus?
They are.
Okay. And then, has there been any further development on looking towards providing Test to Stay as an option for the out-of-school, close-contact quarantine students?
Yeah, I have, I've not heard any new information about it opening up beyond the, the in-school, so I don't have a development for you there.
Because we still seem to have, and I, I thought it was 43, but maybe it went down to 37, out-of-school, close contacts. Are they, like, where, where generally are they coming from? Like, if it's not happening in school, is it siblings of students who are positive?
Yeah, most, most often, there's sibling cases and/or a parent that's a positive case, and so the, the students are there. That, that is the most frequent out-of-school close contact as an in-home situation.
Okay. And then, if there is a sibling who is vaccinated, are they permitted to come back, or are they also quarantined?
If a individual is...
So, a sibling of a positive?
I believe that's still, it's, it's same as any other quarantine rule, I just wanted to verify. So, yes, if, if vaccinated, there isn't a quarantine, even, even at home.
Okay.
If they're not symptomatic, correct?
Correct, if they're not symptomatic.
But even if they're living in a home with a symptomatic positive?
Say it again?
So, even if they're living in a home with a symptomatic positive COVID student or parent, if they're vaccinated, they can come back to school?
Correct.
Okay. But if they're not vaccinated, they cannot?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Schuler? Okay, we will move on to public comment. We have four public comments. In accordance with policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer public comment have the opportunity to do so. A public comment signup sheet was made available until 7:00 PM. Board meetings are available for viewing via live stream on the district's YouTube channel. As with all comments, please be aware that it's the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comments until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is there to listen. Lack of action or a direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per board policy 2.230, the time allotted for each person to speak during public comment may be shortened, we only afford tonight, we will keep it at three minutes. To preserve confidentiality, the board and its president request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a further closed session if necessary. The board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comment. Please include your name and whether you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Long will be timing the comments and raise his hand at the three-minute mark, and we will ask you to stop. Please be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. The first person is Alicia O'Connell.
Good evening, my name is Alicia O'Connell. I am a resident of District 200. I have five kids that have either graduated from the district or are still attending. In response to a radical letter sent by the National Association of School Boards, U.S. Attorney General Merrick Garland has ordered the FBI to work with state and local officials to address what he has called "a disturbing spike in harassment, intimidation, and threats of violence by parents toward educators and school board members." Parents demanding accountability of their elected official... Parents demanding accountability of their elected officials is none of the aforementioned offenses, nor does it rise to the level of domestic terrorism. It's democracy and it's protected by the First Amendment. Quote, "The right to petition government for redress of grievances is the right to make a complaint to one's government without fear of punishment or reprisals." Merrick Garland's memo invoking the power of the federal government against parents engaged in the democratic process is actual harassment and intimidation. Our own school board advises parents to keep comments respectful. While it isn't my style to be sharp, no person is under any obligation to speak respectfully in regard to their First Amendment rights, particularly toward elected officials. As a matter of settled case law, quite the opposite is true. In New York Times versus Sullivan, Justice William Brennan said this to the Supreme Court in nineteen sixty-four, quote, "Thus we consider this case against the background of a profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that it may well include vehement, cost-effective, unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials," end quote. Issues affecting our children are public issues, and robust, even uncomfortable discourse should be championed as a requisite for a free country. In no way am I advocating disrespectful speech here, but it's protected speech, and school boards shouldn't expect comments to not offend their sensibilities. I urge this board to remain steadfast in our national commitment to open debate where ideas are examined and those that lead us toward a more perfect union are embraced. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connell. Mr. Longs? Mrs. Ives?
I do find it hard to believe that this district has spent nearly two years coming up with a fictional portrait of a graduate. According to a leading consulting firm in this area, the portrait of a graduate reflects each community's goals for its students. Let's get a few things straight here. It isn't your job as the school board, or for that matter, the community, to set goals for any individual student. It is your job to give them the academic background to be able to set and meet their own goals, to be able to become self-reliant individuals, to be able to continue on with their schooling if they care to or not, and to have sufficient information about our constitutional republic to be an informed citizen. But since the district continues to follow one educational fad after another, rather than focusing on its core mission, then it should be noted, there was no need to have focus group after focus group pare down the infinite number of qualities that could make a good citizen and a successful graduate. Instead, the district could have simply posted in every hall of every school, the portrait of Staff Sergeant Robbie Miller, along with his Medal of Honor citation. His personal sacrifice for his fellow man encompasses all we could hope to have in our graduates. He saved the lives of seven of his Special Forces Army team and fifteen Afghan soldiers by laying down a field of fire when their patrol got caught in an ambush, allowing them to escape to safety. A seasoned infantryman, he knew what danger he was in, that it would probably cost him his life, and he did it anyway. Robbie exhibited all the traits your focus group came up with and more: problem solver, ethical communicator, resilience, relationship builder, innovator, lifelong learner, and collaborator. Here's the point, if slogans were the key to success, then the portrait process wouldn't be necessary, because we've had one slogan after another every single year for as far as I can remember. Spend time figuring out why barely fifty percent of the kids read or do math at grade level in this district, instead of following the latest fad from the educational industrial complex. We're better than this. Our graduates have already proven that.
Thank you, Ms. Ives. Shannon Limjinko.
My name is Shannon Limjinko, and I'm a parent of two elementary school students in the district. And I don't have a prepared speech tonight, but I wanted to come just to say that I reviewed the portrait of a graduate. I think it's great. I think you've done a lot of work in this area, and I really respect your expertise and the time that you've devoted to it. I don't think academics are mutually exclusive to the other things outlined in the portrait of the graduate. Obviously, academics are included and are important, but I do think that what you've outlined in there, in that plan, is great. And I know you've talked to many parents who have informed you on this, and I wanted to provide that perspective. Second, I want to thank you all for your service. I know this is not an easy time to be a school board member. As a previous speaker mentioned, the DOJ and FBI are investigating for a variety of reasons what they're calling domestic terrorism against school board members. I don't think that's anything to be taken lightly. I don't think it's anything that anyone thinks means that you're getting up here speaking your mind. Of course, everyone thinks that that's okay, but we heard just locally from two districts very close to us, District Three Hundred and District Three Oh Three, that school board members are being threatened, dead animals are being thrown on their yard, they're being stalked, they're being filmed at the grocery store. I hope that none of that is happening to you, and I hope that our community would not stand for that. I do not stand for that. And I think for people to get up here and say that it's not true, it's a joke, it's not happening, is ridiculous. I think we need to support our school board. I don't always agree with all the decisions that you all have made this year. I do respect your role and I respect your service. I know it's not easy. I really hope that our community of District Two Hundred will come together to support you, and really, I don't want you to be intimidated in your role. I know other school board districts, our school board members have resigned because they are afraid, and I don't think that's right, and I hope that no one in this room would stand for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Limjinko. Moving on to our consent agenda. Acceptance of gift to Whittier Elementary School, acceptance of gift to Wheaton-Warnville South Athletics Boys Basketball Program, approval to add temporary serious safety hazard bus route, approval of professional learning expenditure requests for board members, approval of statements of completion from the ROE, approval of the renewal of Scantron Achievement Series and Analytics subscriptions, approval to purchase additional staff laptops, approval of bills payable and payroll, approval of minutes September eighth, twenty-twenty-one, open and closed September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one Committee of the Whole, open and closed, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to May twenty-twenty as allowable by law, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any board members that want removed, any items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Dr. Schuler, any more information?
No additional information.
Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Schuler? Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booten?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Blatner. Mrs. Hutchinson?
Ms. Booten?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Dr. Yboah?
Yes.
Yes. Next is the posting of our policy consent agenda. Approval of revised policy two-point-one-oh, school district governance, approval of revised policy two-point-one-three-oh, board superintendent relationship, approval of revised policy two-point-two-four-oh, board policy development, approval of revised policy two-point-three-oh, school district elections, approval of revised policy five-point-one-oh, equal employment opportunity in minority recruitment, approval of revised policy six-point-one-four-five, migrant students, approval of revised policy six-point-one-six-oh, English learners, approval of revised policy six-point-two-three-five, access to electronic networks, approval of revised policy six-point-two-five-five, assemblies and ceremonies, approval of revised policy six-point-two-six-oh, complaints about curriculum, instructional materials, and programs, approval of revised policy seven-point-two-eight-oh, communicable and chronic infectious disease, approval of revised eight-point-one-nine-oh, parent organizations and booster clubs. Are there any items board members want removed from this consent agenda? Any other information, Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, just a quick reminder process. So the board has a policy committee that reviews any recommended policy changes in depth. That happens before they're brought to the board on first reading and public posting, which was last month. We did receive one comment or question, really more of a question, on policy five-point-one-oh, equal employment opportunity and minority recruitment. There was an adjustment in that policy that spoke to a district's ability to use conviction records as a determinant in hiring. And I just want to clarify, this does not mean that the district cannot do that. There are certain offenses enumerated in school code that automatically would disqualify somebody from employment. The change in policy is simply saying that if there is a conviction record and the district has concern or would want to use that to disqualify somebody from hire, there's a due process that the individual goes through. It does not mean that we cannot, it just means that there's a due process that we go through to ensure that we have full understanding of that record, which is not out of the realm of how we have been currently handling that. So it is, this is not a change in practice for us. In fact, that adjustment is really just bringing the policy in line with how we are already handling that. That's the only thing I wanted to clarify, otherwise, no comments on the other policies.
Are there any questions or comments regarding the policy agenda?
Could I just ask also, Jeff, that you clarify policy six-two-fifty-five, just that it's not saying that prayer or invocation isn't allowed on a school campus, it's that it's not endorsed or overseen by?
Or at a school-sponsored activity, I think. You had asked one question specific to, we have some student-initiated groups that actually meet on our site with a supervisor. Obviously, in those circumstances, certainly allowed. So it's not, it's not eliminating prayer, it is indicating at a school-sponsored activity. We do not leave that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Schuler? Okay, hearing none, I'd like a motion and a second to approve the policy posting consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booten?
Second.
Second by Dr. Yboah. Mrs. Hutchinson, can you call the roll?
Yes.
Dr. Yboah?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Yes. Next up, approval of a professional contract with Upland Design Limited of Plainfield, Illinois. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, so I'm gonna let Dr. O'Keefe just give a very quick background to this item. This is actually part of your master facility work, and I shouldn't say your master facility, it's part of your facility work for the upcoming summer. The board approved at a previous meeting the district to prepare bids for your capital work for next summer. Also included the incorporation of a couple of playground projects for next summer, and so this is really just an update and approval tied to that work.
Thank you, yes. The purpose of forming, in essence, a small committee with Dr. Schuler, myself, and Mr. Robinson, was to come together and determine how we're going to move forward with addressing our playground situations after the board commitment. We felt that there would be the need to put some form of playbook or agenda in place that can be replicated on an annual basis, look to an outside consulting firm potentially to help us with developing that playbook, and then assisting us with getting the playgrounds at Johnson and Lincoln off the ground for next summer and using those services all the way through. So we met with six different companies, four of which were either independent companies that represented manufacturers or manufacturers reps, and then two different consulting design firms. One was Hitchcock, which did the workover for us at Jefferson Early Childhood Center, and then Upland, which was a recommendation from Paul Pasetti, our architect at Leggett. After meeting with those six different firms and then getting two submissions from the playground slash architectural landscape firms, we determined that we believe Upland would provide us, in terms of cost and benefits of what we're looking for, the right action to develop a playbook that will be used on an annual basis and managed by myself moving forward after this year, and then using their consulting services to help us put in parameters and platforms for how we develop our playgrounds, starting with Johnson and Lincoln, and then again, turn those services over to Dr. Schuler, myself, and Mr. Robinson in the future. So we went through a lengthy process over a period of three weeks to meet with different firms, and just, this is our recommendation that the firm we believe is going to best represent you and develop our playgrounds at Lincoln and Johnson next summer.
Any questions or comments for Dr. O'Keefe or Dr. Schuler? I have one question. So this is developing a kind of standard, if school parent groups choose to fundraise, they're, they can add to that? Am I right in saying that?
Correct. So actually, two things incorporated with this agreement. Upland is going to actually do the design on the two playgrounds. So part of this is the architectural design work on the two projects that we're doing to a process playbook that can be replicated at the other building. So the board will remember from the report, over the next seven to eight years, you have a number of playgrounds that are going to come due for replacement. Many of your elementary buildings are going to be touched over the next seven to eight years, and so this is the playbook that will follow. But to your question, for both Lincoln and Johnson for next summer, they actually do have parent committees that have worked to raise some funds that may bring either some additional features to the playground and/or enhance an aspect of the playground. So we are bringing a core district contribution and then allowing parent groups to still fundraise and enhance the design or personalize it for their building.
So I have one other question. Some of our schools vary quite differently in population. Is that being taken into consideration for the playbook, or is it going to be just one standard?
Are you talking student population?
Student population.
Yeah, so student population would really contribute to the size of the playground itself. Obviously, size of the playground is going to be a distinguisher on what that district contribution is. If we are designing a much larger playground, we would anticipate the base cost to be higher.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have a follow-up on yours, Chris. So I remember reading in one of the contracts, not sure which one, that if the price of the project for the playground increased, there would be a possible increase in costs. So if the parent raised or donations solicited pushes us over the anticipated amount, do we know how much the fee will increase, or is there some negotiation there?
Yeah, so part of it being negotiated based on the piece is generally an hourly rate that you're going to pay based on the additional design cost to that piece that I guess I wanted to mention with that is that as we've worked with parent groups, we've been clear that in addition to any like hard playground costs, there would be some design costs associated with that as well. So they will have to figure that into what their contribution is over and above what the base district cost is.
Okay, thank you.
So will it be, as we move forward, will it still be part of the playground design that there is maybe an expectation, that there is some parent involvement with raising money, or will this playbook and what the district contributes provide a nice playground where fundraising is not necessary, but if they want maybe an additional piece of equipment that they can then fundraise?
There would not be an expectation for fundraising. We will fund a playground that will cover the building's needs.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I remember from the- And is, I remember from a couple of meetings ago, is there, has there been work with the Park District as to what they'll contribute and some collaboration there for funds?
Yeah, there, there would. So again, the two buildings for next, uh, next summer are two different Park Districts. Johnson is the Warrenville Park District, Lincoln is, is Wheaton Park District. So we are working with the, the Park District to look at specific sites. The Park District's willingness to, to contribute to a project is going to be somewhat dependent on the location of that playground and if they have another Park District playground within close proximity. So in some cases, our playground is that community. Playground Park District doesn't have one. In those cases, much more likely that they would engage with us on that.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions? I will ask for a motion in a second to approve the hiring of Upland Design Limited to provide professional services and developing a playbook for future planning and professional services related to the renovation of the playgrounds at Lincoln Elementary and Johnson Elementary in the summer of 2022 as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Long?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, can you call the roll?
Mr. Ma? Yes.
Yes. Ms. Blatner? Yes. Dr. Yoboah?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we move on to oral reports. We have a student learning feature. I see Mrs. Murphy is heading up there.
She is. So Mrs. Murphy is gonna give the board a, an update. We've had some questions, comments that have come into the board on a bill recently passed regarding comprehensive sex education. Want to give both the board and community an update on that bill and kind of where it currently stands in terms of process. So, Mrs. Murphy?
Good evening. So tonight, the student learning feature is, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, I'm giving you an update with regards to what our current curriculum is for human growth and development and human sexuality, and also some information about the current new law. And so when you look at our current curriculum for this area, there's, we get that content from several different places. In the state of Illinois, the health curriculum is paired with PE curriculum. And so there are three standards, three goal areas for PE. There's three goal areas for health. And when we talk about human growth and development curriculum, that really comes from Goal twenty-three, which is about the human body system. We also have received guidance from the State Board of Education with regards to sex education. And so this came about in about 2014. And really guidance, you see that whole paragraph there. But summary for you, what you need to know in this is there's really four things that need to be taught for comprehensive sex education, which is taught in our schools, middle schools and high school. It's contraception, abstinence, HIV/AIDS and sexually transmitted diseases. The other place where we receive content is really from your board policy, a portion of six sixty, which outlines requirements for curriculum. In there, there are requirements for health education. And I want to draw your attention to E, where that is about age-appropriate sexual abuse and sexual assault awareness and prevention education. This is otherwise known as Aaron's Law that was passed in 2010. So this is also a part of the content that our students are exposed to in that coursework. So when you look at, so here for you on our approved curriculum. So you can't see our approved curriculum on the district website in the student learning section. It's posted on health. And some information for you, the elementary curriculum was approved in 2007. There actually is no textbook for that content area. The middle school and high school curriculum was adopted in 2015 and there were new textbooks approved at that time. We have also created a separate document since we have received a lot of community questions regarding our human sexuality curriculum and content. We have created a separate document. This is actually in your green folders. And so I draw your attention to it. It's a front and back document. And on there, we have pulled out separately that particular content and how it progresses from, there is no content at kindergarten, but so how it progresses from first grade all the way through the high school health course. At the elementary level, this is really paired with learning about animals. And at the, the topic of puberty really is introduced in fourth and fifth grade and then in sixth, seventh, eighth grade, and then also in high school. You will see that, what that content looks like currently for human sexuality. I will also mention this document that you're looking at right now. We have posted this on the student learning site of our district website, that portion. So now I'm going to go into Public Act one oh two dash zero five to give you some information about that. So this was signed into law by Governor Pritzker in August. It's called the Keeping Youth Safe and Healthy Act. And in, in a nutshell here, some big overall information you'll see is it does require school districts that deliver comprehensive sex education to utilize a standards-based sex education course in middle school. And then at the elementary level, it creates personal health and safety standards. When you dig into that public act, there are some new topics that are specifically mentioned in there. And so I have listed those new topics here on the slide for you. I really want to draw your attention to that last bullet point. And there's mention of alignment to the National Sex Ed Standards. And so the National Sex Ed Standards were actually recently published in 2020. That's the second version of the standards. And they are organized into seven content strands. And so those seven content strands are actually listed here for you. And so there are, there is content that sits underneath each of those seven content areas. I also have a few slides that actually have exact language from that public act that I, I wanted to point out to the board. And this first one, I'm actually going to read verbatim because I think it's pretty important. It says here, "Schools may choose and adapt to the age and developmentally appropriate, medically accurate, complete, culturally appropriate, inclusive and trauma-informed, comprehensive personal health and safety and comprehensive sexual health education curriculum that meets the specific needs of their community." And so what does that mean? Well, school districts are not mandated or required to teach the K five personal health and safety standards and/or the six twelve comprehensive sexual education standards. If school districts choose to teach this content, it must be aligned with the ISB standards. Incidentally, these are not released yet. We do not have this. And the National Health Education Standards. ISB will not be providing lessons or resources that districts are required to use. I included that point because that's a question I have received multiple times from community members that have contacted me and I, I wanted to be sure that was clear. It is not as if ISB is requiring us specific lessons or specific texts that need to be used. And so I did just want to make sure the board was aware of this specific quote from the public act because this is quite different than other curricular areas. And that idea of schools may choose and adapt and also this, to the specific needs of their community. Some other language that is written in here, this is quite long, but the essence of this really says that students are not required to participate in this curricular area and this content. And there would be no disciplinary action if they choose not to participate. And one more piece from that public act for you is that families, caregivers, parents, they should have the opportunity to review the curriculum, resources, textbooks, and they do need to have a point of contact in terms of who they would, would address their inquiries to. So I, I did want to just walk through what our curricular process does look like and what we're going to put into place based on this information. So first and foremost, that curriculum review process really begins once we have information from ISB. That is supposed to be by August of twenty-two. I, I do want to make sure everybody does know there are no changes to what is currently taught because we don't have any new guidance. Additionally, we always go through a process where we have a committee that is formed. That committee would review what ISB provides us with our current content and then would make any determinations if there are changes that they would recommend. That process has always included administrators and teachers. We believe that it's important that we include community members as a part of this work. This is a topic that is very important and has been a topic that I've received many questions about from our community. And so we think it's very important that we have community involvement in this curricular topic. So that would be, we would be forming a sexual education advisory team for that work. As a reminder to board and community, any proposals for curricular changes are brought to the board. The board approves any of those changes to be on public display. That public display is for thirty days. That includes curriculum and textbooks. And then at that point in time, the public has an opportunity to provide feedback. That feedback is always provided to each of you in advance so you can review. And after thirty days, it is brought to the Board of Education for consideration for approval. And at that point, the board considers the feedback that is received from the public. So this concludes the presentation that I've put together. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments for Mrs. Murphy?
I have a question. So when it says no student shall be required to take or participate in any class, don't we require our high schoolers to take, isn't it a state graduation requirement to take health class?
It, it's a state requirement that we have that course, but they can opt out of that portion of that content.
The sex ed portion?
Correct.
Okay.
That goes back to, I believe it's that first slide where there's other goal areas in health education. There's those three goal areas, so there would be other parts of the curriculum they would need to participate in.
Okay, thank you. And one other quick question. So if we don't anticipate ISB to come through with the standards until August of 2022, when is the act to be, going to effect?
Well, that, that is a law right now and we are teaching comprehensive sex education right now, but utilizing the current curriculum that we have in place.
So is it possible that the standards come out next August and there's the expectation that if we are teaching this, we would be immediately, you know, meeting the standards?
In, in my experience with these kinds of curricular changes, I've never experienced that where we get a set of standards and there's an expectation that that's done immediately. That's been my experience in all of the time that I've been in this type of position.
Okay, thank you.
Angela, just take you back to the one point in the slide, which does indicate that the district has a point of decision to make on this. So even, even if the standards are released in August of twenty-two, districts in fairness have to have the opportunity to work through their curriculum review process and make whatever decisions that they want to for their respective community. So I don't, I don't anticipate there would be an immediate implementation date of standards are released in August and you've got to, you've got to implement. You, districts will still have time to work through their evaluation and, and their curriculum process, whatever that looks like.
Okay, maybe I'm not understanding. So if, if we teach a sex ed curriculum in our district, beginning when they release the standards, so if we make that choice to teach, we must follow the standards, but we can make the choice not to teach at all?
That's my understanding of the, of the language.
There's no like middle ground if, if there's some standard we didn't?
I think there's still some clarity that needs to, to come out around that to kind of understand what our range of choices are as a, as a school district. But I just think important to recognize that there is some, some choice and local control in that decision.
Okay, thank you.
When, oh, I'm sorry, I just have a quick, when students do opt out, are they then just given like a study hall or are they given alternate activities to do that maybe don't involve sex education that are still related to health? Like what, when, and I don't know how long these units last, you know? So when, when a student opts out, I guess what are they doing during that time? Do you know what I mean?
I, I think it varies by level. And so I, I think they most likely are provided some alternative assignments that are not related to that content, but are health-related, especially at our middle schools and high school.
Okay, thank you.
I think at the middle school, I've encountered where they can actually be put into a PE class instead of that unit so they can have that physical activity in place of that time. And that may have changed, but that's been my experience.
I have one question and then a comment. So for high school, currently right now, it's at sophomore year that, that this is being taught?
I believe.
For health? Okay. And what about Aaron's Law? Is that something we need to do every year? So?
We, we currently do that in all of our health education classes. And at the elementary level, we do do that kindergarten through fifth grade.
Okay, so, but we don't need to do Aaron's Law the other, other years of high school?
We do, we do it currently at our high school level.
You still do it?
Yes.
Okay. I, I appreciate that we're bringing the community in and sharing this information on the front end so that we are all on the same page and we aren't having misinformation in that that's out there and we can find out what our community is also looking for. So I do appreciate that we are bringing community into this, into this conversation as well. Thank you. All right. Next, discussion item, discussion of career pathways. Dr. Schuler?
So Mr. Smith is coming up to the podium. Ian Smith is our Director of Secondary Curriculum in the District. One of the projects that Ian has been leading or facilitating in the district is our work and focus on career pathways. And so he's here tonight to provide the board with an update on that work as it was very much a prominent part of your, your goals and work plan for this year. So, Mr. Smith?
Great, thank you, Dr. Schuler. Good evening, everybody. I'm, I'm really excited to be able to talk about career pathways. This is initiative that began a few years back, but we got put on hold with COVID. So we're really excited to be able to bring it back again and dive into this. The vision for career pathways is to create engaging and relevant learning experiences to prepare all students for their future, particularly as that relates to their careers. Students will graduate with an identified career area of interest, external work-related experiences, early college credits and career-specific credentials. Why do we need this? District two hundred offers many electives and activities that allow students to pursue interests, explore careers, discover new passions. Career pathways help students navigate all those options. Students will be more likely to take electives that will be most beneficial to them, both in terms of pursuing their interests and then the area of career exploration. And of course, it also connects with Vision 2022, expanding the opportunities for students to have choice, challenge and success in their learning through differentiation and personalization, and also providing more ways to apply learning to the context of the real world. So in those ways as well, it connects with Vision 2022. So to, to get a three-year implementation plan, and that should be in your folder as well, the slide that you're seeing here, where there's five key components and goals and then the work that we're going to do each year for the next, this year and the next two years and really beyond. I don't see this as something that will ever really end. But for the next three years, we've outlined the tasks that, that we're, we're going to be accomplishing. And those five key components that we're focusing on are career awareness, career readiness, dual-credit college coursework, career-based learning opportunities and industry-recognized credentials. So I'll talk about each of those and the work that we're doing in those areas this year. So the first is career awareness. So the goal with that is to design high-quality pathways that provide opportunities for students to explore, learn and engage in various career options. So this year's work is to align all of our courses and all of our extracurricular opportunities to the sixteen nationally, nationally recognized career clusters. So what these career clusters are, are really just all, all jobs and all careers that exist. So what these career clusters are, are really just all, all jobs and all careers that exist fall into one of these 16 clusters. So these are things like, you know, broad categories like architecture and construction, business management, education and training, finance, government and public administration, health sciences, information technology, arts and communication, you know, and others. But every career falls into one of those clusters. And all of our courses that we offer at District 200 and all of our extracurricular opportunities as well will be aligned into one of those 16 clusters. So students, when they take a career interest survey, will, will have a career cluster identified for them and then have the option of taking classes that align for, you know, all four years of high school to that cluster. And so really, it gives them the opportunity to have a purpose and, and a goal and attaining the skills that they need to be able to be successful in that career. And within those clusters as well, in addition to courses and extracurricular opportunities, things like workplace learning experiences will be outlined for them, certificates and credentials that they could earn within that, that cluster so that they could be able to actually leave high school and if they so choose to be able to get a job and have, have a credential that'll allow them to do that. I'll talk about that a little bit more later. Also, possible careers that fall within that area and college majors that they should consider pursuing. And then the next part of this year's work is just to finalize that process for students to take and complete that career interest survey, redesigning our course catalog to reflect the career pathways. And then one thing, one I'm, I'm most excited about right now is the education pathway, and I'll talk about that a little bit more later as well, that we will have students in that pathway next year. Under career readiness, assist and monitor student progress in career planning and preparation. And so the work this year is to identify a tool or system to track student progress and data related to the ISB career readiness indicator. So these are, are nine indicators that ISB believes that if students accomplish three of these in their high school career, that, that ISB would consider them to be career-ready. So things like career development, having a career development experience while in high school, which would be like an apprenticeship, which again, we are working on developing those as well. Achieving an industry credential, which I had just talked about, at any point in time before graduation. Achieving ASVAB score of 31. Being in a dual-credit career pathway course while they're in high school and getting college credit, completing a program of study before graduation. So what that is, is really any two courses in our CTE world that are related to each other. So that could be like an accounting one and accounting two, or graphic arts one or graphic arts two, or, or computer applications and AP computer science. Two courses, again, in CTE that are connected would be a program of study. And again, they would have to have just two courses. Attaining and maintaining consistent employment for a minimum of 12 months during high school or two summer, summers of consecutive employment during high school, or 25 hours community service during high school, or being in two or more organized co-curricular activities during high school. So again, our goal is for all students to at least achieve three of those. The next component of, of our work is dual-credit college coursework. So expand the dual-credit courses that we offer to prepare students for post-secondary education and reduce the time and cost of college. So at the, our next board meeting in November, we're going to be proposing two new courses. One is AP art history, and the other is this course, Introduction to Teaching 1 and 2. So this will be a dual-credit course through Loyola University. And the goal of this course is to give, give students a hands-on, practical, real-world glimpse into what it is to be a teacher. And, and part of that includes a 32-hour field experience. And, and with all of our, you know, elementary schools, middle schools, high schools here in the district, we're really excited that next year, we're going to be able to have our high school kids going to other schools, other grade levels, and being able to get into classrooms and just explore what it means to be a teacher and, and have an opportunity to work one-on-one with students at a different, different grade levels. And, and again, just to light that fire within them to, to hopefully go into education. But really with, with, I think the ultimate goal and what excites me the most about this course is that with the hope that, and, and with the encouragement that they'll come back and teach for District 200. And, and particularly as that relates to diverse students, because ultimately what we want is, is for our, our teaching staff to look like, just like what our, our student population looks like. And, and so there will be a special effort to recruit diverse students and to take this course, again, with the hope that they'll come back and, and, and hopefully, you know, do their clinical hours in District 200, their, their, if, if their school allows it, their student teaching in District 200, guaranteeing them an interview, guaranteeing them consideration for a job that, that would fit their, you know, educational preparation when they're ready to graduate. So a long-term strategy for growing our own, our own teacher pool. And then along with dual-credit also, just exploring other COD courses. And so we're, we're, we're doing that work right now as well, because we'd love to just expand our dual-credit offerings. We, we think being able to achieve college credit while in high school is just terrific on many, many levels for students. And so just expanding that over the coming years is a huge goal for us. The next key component is career-based learning opportunities. So here, it's to increase opportunities for internships and work-based learning experiences for students. So this fall, we are recruiting students for spring of '22, so just next semester, to enroll into a manufacturing or apprenticeship program. So this is a apprenticeship program where students would leave school early at the end of the day, their last period of the day, they would go to their work site and they would be exposed to a variety, and again, this is, this first one is specifically manufacturing, but a variety of job responsibilities, learn job skills at the manufacturing site that they go to with the goal of honing in on one and then eventually receiving intensive training in that one area where they will receive, you know, skills and, and again, training to, to be able to learn how to do that job. And then again, with the goal, so they, if they so choose, they would be able to go right into a job when they graduate. And, and that would be another opportunity there to earn credentials as well. And, and plus, this apprenticeship program will also be teaching them things, other kinds of job skills, soft skills, interviewing skills, things like that, while they're also teaching them about manufacturing. And next year, we have information technology and cybersecurity lined up for students to participate in those apprenticeship programs. So we'll be, again, looking for students from both high schools in, in these, these areas this next spring and then next school year. And then down the road, there's other apprenticeship programs that we're looking at as well. But these two are, are in the works. And then also, just finally, within this, this area is bringing in guest speakers. We, we have contacts in the community who have indicated a desire to come in to speak to classes about what they do and inform students about careers and, and just getting those students in, in with our, our classes and our students. And whether it's Zoom or it's in-person, to give that one-to-one experience with students to have a chance to hear about those careers and ask questions. And then last, which I've already alluded to, but giving students opportunities to earn industry-recognized credentials. And so they'd be able to, again, get these credentials and then take them and go get a job right out of high school with these credentials. And there's a number of ways they can get credentials. They can get them through courses that we offer and modules within those courses, through TCD, again, through these apprenticeship programs. And students can also go online and do a module online and take a test and receive the credentials that way. But, but our goal is, again, to expand that and have as many students receiving credentials as possible. And that's it. Any questions?
Questions or comments for Mr. Smith?
I have a question. So has this actually, has it started or will like, well, the way I read this is it next year's freshman class that will really start as a freshman and go through this?
Yeah.
I'm a little confused on that.
Great question. Yeah, so, so the goal is, as you can see on there, is next year, every student, nine through 12, will be taking, will be, when they're registering for courses, they'll be signing up for one of these pathways. But that, but we, we do have as, as a goal, that's the official goal, but we do, are planning and hoping to get as many students as possible this year for next year in one of these pathways. So every student next year, but like, especially with this intro to education pathway and other pathways and, and, you know, as, as we are able to work that out, have as many students as possible for next year as well. So, so this is kind of a pilot year, but then next year, every student.
Okay, okay. I think it's great. I, I think this is, I, I really like the focus on, well, education for sure. I, I know that's been talked about over the last couple of years and I think that's fantastic and I'm excited to see that. I'm excited to see some emphasis put on manufacturing and trades and, and TCD. I, I think that's such an opportunity right now that I think the pendulum's swinging a little bit, you know, that we need to kind of get people back into those fields and, and also make people aware, just take 10 seconds to share a story that I, my, the woman who does my hair, she went to, she, she was in the Carol Stream Schools and she went through TCD through the beauty program, but she knew, she'd always known she wanted to do hair. And she said, "I graduated high school with her license." Like she had no debt, like she went right into working. And I think that's an important point for some kids to really understand that you can, you can follow these paths and, and go into a really good career, you know, if you, if you're aware of those opportunities. So I think that's great. And, and then obviously, you know, everyone else who's interested in, in engineering and business and accounting and architecture and, and those kinds of things that would go on to more of a four-year degree program. I think that really, you know, helps people, you know, helps our kids get on a path and see what they're interested in, but also maybe see what they're not interested in. You know, sometimes you're like, "Ooh, I really want to do this." And then you take a couple, you know, accounting classes and I say that as a business major who took accounting, but you know, you're like, "Oh, my gosh." Like, "I don't want to sit and do numbers all day." Where other kids, maybe they would take an accounting, not thinking that's what they were, and like, "Oh, my gosh, I love this." You know, so I, I think it's, I think it's great that we're moving in this direction and I'm excited to, to, you know, see it all come together. I know it got sort of delayed a bit with, with COVID, but, but I'm excited to see it come to fruition. So, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
One question. It looks like this is highly dependent upon the guidance counselors at the high school to implement, yeah?
Yes.
Was, I assume feedback was solicited from the guidance counselors about putting this together?
Yeah, guidance counselors and particularly the department chairs of guidance counseling have, we've been meeting with them and they've been guiding, you know, guiding us, you know, in this work, yeah.
Yeah, so a follow-up question on that is as students meet with their guidance counselors, I'm very, like Susan, very interested in expanding opportunities for the trades. However, there's a long history of sort of something that looks a little bit like tracking, right? That even starts at the early elementary years and associated with race and class. And I'm, I'm very much in support of this program. However, if we're not careful, one of the unintended consequences could be that certain kids end up sort of getting tracked into a direction that has more to do with the possibility of implicit bias or even disciplinary infractions and attendance and other things that actually don't match their interest or academic capacity. So we just want to make sure that the guidance counselors are super aware of the possibility of sort of leading in, in a direction that might not. For example, later on a slide, you talk about recruiting. I think there's really good work being done in the district to actually recruit intentionally students who are less likely to sign up for AP courses and provide the supports. Turns out, they can be really successful and there was other reasons for their under-enrollment in those higher-level academic courses. So just want to make sure that we, we're really careful about how we, how we recruit and, and guide in that way. Question on the timeline of work projects. I'm just wondering how that maps on to the special education program and the transition program. Is this level of consideration being applied to our transition program options?
Yeah, that, that really all students in our, in our district, you know, can be, can be on these pathways and, and can, you know, participate in a career cluster. You know, for individual, you know, special education students, I think that would really be, you know, our goal would be for every student. But it really would be a conversation with that student, their case manager and parents, I mean, to really see what's appropriate.
But they're being, they're being considered, of course, as we think about it.
Yes, yes.
I just have a few more.
You know, Mr. Smith, I can add on to that as well. Recently, we actually had this same conversation with the executive director, Mrs. Ekstrom, and really were highlighting all the wonderful experiences that currently sit in our transition program for work-based experiences and also some of our courses at both of the high schools. So I think this opportunity with career pathways gives us another opportunity to look at those programs, but I do think there's much to celebrate already taking place at our transition program.
And also just to your, your question about selecting students for pathways, so, so, take a career cluster finder that will give them, based on how they answer the questions, you know, it provides them with, you know, here's a couple of career clusters that you should consider. And so it's, it's really just going from there to having a conversation with a counselor to say, "Well, you know, this was your strongest, this was your second strongest, you know, do, do either of these appeal to you? Here's the kinds of jobs that fall within that." And really just letting that student make that decision. And, and it's not locking anybody in either, because it's, it's recommending courses, but by all means, I mean, even if students on a business pathway, but they really want to take art, I mean, they can certainly take art. But it's, again, and, and nobody's locked into a specific one either that they can't jump to a different one, just like what you said, Ms. Smith. I think one of the values of this really is, as much as discovering passions and, and obtaining skills and things like that, that would direct you and, and prepare you for a career, some of the most valuable lessons can be, "Gosh, I really don't like this, you know, so I'm going to save myself from wasting, you know, that first year of college and be able to go straight into maybe a different program." So that's just as valuable, you know, to us as well.
Just one, one clarification to Mr. Smith, and correct me if I'm wrong. So what's not changing in this pathways work is you have an existing policy that sets graduation requirements. District 200's graduation requirements exceed the requirements that are actually in the, the state school code, right, for graduation. That's not changing, right? So, so to be clear, the requirement for students to take four years of English, to take a required amount of math, science, social studies is not changing. One, this is looking at the areas of their day where they do have choice and making sure that that choice is aligned to ideally a future interest, right? So to, this is Buden's point, that either students start to have that experience in high school to decide, "Hey, I think I'm interested in engineering. Is that really what I'm interested in or passionate about? Or if not, I, I probably ought to figure that out before I start to invest a lot of money in college and, you know, that particular pathway." So I, as I make clear with, with the, the pieces, I think what Mr. Smith is outlining in the chart are really the key areas within the pathways experience, but recognize that is on top of your core graduation requirements that are not changing. So this is not reducing, diminishing, you know, core academic requirements. It's just looking at the areas of the day where they're having choice, aligning it, looking at where students can continue to accumulate early college options beyond just AP, classes that are currently offered, also looking at some of those workplace-based experiences. We introduced a, a number of years back, a new business incubator class, which has an unbelievable application element with a lot of mentoring, folks from the community that are helping students to come in. And so part of this is seeing that same possibility apply to other areas within our curriculum and other pathways as well, right? That's what kind of sits on top of all of this. So again, like what we're focused on here is what's new, but again, just recognize that is on top of a, a core experience. It's not changing. We're not recommending an adjustment to grad requirements or anything like that at this point. adjustment to grad requirements or anything like that at this point.
So, and, just, oh, sorry, Mary.
Go ahead.
Um, just to clarify, so outside of the dual credit classes that may, you know, start to be offered, otherwise the current classes that we have will stay the same. Okay?
Yeah. Uh, again, based on, on the analysis of some of the pathways, there may, there will likely be a need to continue to expand some coursework opportunities. So as we look at some of those career pathways and may recognize some gaps or some holes in, in maybe an engineering pathway or, you know, an, so I think it may bring new opportunities to, to bear. It's not necessarily going to, to take them away. And, and again, just recognition, if you look at our course booklet, we have far more courses on the books than actually run every year to, to some degree at the secondary level. Uh, what courses run are based somewhat on what students sign up for. So they vote with their feet, right, in terms of the, the course opportunities that actually run. So I think it may bring some new opportunities, but the intention is not to see opportunities go away, right, in any other areas.
Thank you.
My question is related, I think, um, in terms of, uh, um, the tool. Well, I think we're looking by 2023 to have every student achieve the career readiness, which, did you say three of these bullet points constitute readiness?
Right, yes.
Okay, so one of the, I, I appreciate this because many international schools around the world actually incorporate these kinds of things into graduation requirements. I think what we're saying is we won't do that at this time, but we'll highly encourage it, hoping for a hundred percent participation. But if somebody doesn't achieve career readiness, they'll certainly graduate.
Not going to graduation requirement.
Yeah, okay. So still promoting it is, is, in my opinion, fantastic. I'm just wondering whether, for example, community service, will that include, say, at one's church or outside of school functions will be included? Okay, so it, it can be anything. It's not directly school-related?
Right, correct, yep.
Okay. And just recognizing something like students who care for younger siblings and other things that differ by demographic, that kind of engagement will also have a way of being measured and valued.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, you know, I, I'm not sure how specifically the state has defined that, so I, I'd have to, I'd have to go look at that, but, um, you know, quite possibly. I couldn't say for sure that that would fall under that, but, um, I, um, certainly anything volunteer, outside of school, community organizations, food pantries, churches, those kinds of things certainly fall under that. Um, but, uh, yeah, that would be, we just need clarification from the state specifically about that last piece.
One other, why is Loyola our partner in providing these courses?
Yeah, um, so, uh, the teachers that, um, and admissions that put this together had, had looked at a couple of programs. So COD was one. They offered dual credit, uh, Intred Education and looked at Loyola, uh, and Posibles and other ones. But I, I know that they, they believe that Loyola kind of fit our mission and vision and, and what we do here the best. Uh, and so that's ultimately why we are going with Loyola.
Okay. And are we paying, our district is paying Loyola then?
Uh, so, um, if students desire to get the dual credit, then they do have to pay. There's a, it's a very reduced, uh, credit hour fee, but they do have to pay a fee.
Students pay for that?
Yes. Yeah. It is reduced though. It's not what Loyola students would pay.
Okay.
A dual credit by its, uh, its definition, uh, is our teachers are teaching that class. So whatever, whatever fee is paid is really, uh, an administrative fee for processing that college credit, but it's ultimately District 200 teachers who are teaching that course.
Oh, okay. Thank you for that clarification. I think this, my last question is, um, it came up a little bit too in terms of the dropout rate, even though this won't change graduation requirements. I wonder whether it could, for, for students who just don't do the education thing very well, can this give them a very viable alternative?
Absolutely.
This is what I'm hearing, right? So we can measure then our dropout rates, but also, I mean, keep that data point consistent, but also say among those who just didn't finish, they're doing really amazing things with their lives based on the work they're doing. But I guess suppose if they drop out, then they're not doing this anyway.
Correct. But, uh, again, I think, uh, if, if we continue to focus and make education relevant for every student, then we, we don't lose students. And again, just point of recognition, our dropout rate is less than one percent. So, uh, our graduation rate under our report card is around ninety-five percent. I think you're going to see that coming up, but that is largely a function of the fact that students that go to our transition center are not counted in that graduation rate. They don't officially get a diploma until completion of the, the transition program. So that actually factors into the largest chunk of the difference between ninety-five and a, and a hundred percent. Our actual dropout rate is, uh, is less than one percent, about one percent.
But, but I could tell you just my previous experience on, and having worked, uh, in a district where we did build a manufacturing program, so that, to that one specifically, but other, other programs achieved the same kind of results is, uh, when students that maybe were more marginal and maybe weren't excited about school, uh, in terms of the academic part of it, uh, get hooked on something like, you know, a manufacturing apprenticeship, and it's, it can, it can turn that student around. I mean, I've seen it. Um, it really can, can be a lifesaver for students. And so, uh, that's one of the things that excites me about this as well, is just being able to inspire students and, you know, make that learning relevant, make it practical and, um, give them that vision for, you know, the future, that, that, that these, these courses and this, these opportunities are going to really set them on their path for life. Uh, and so I, I, I think in terms of dropout rate, I mean, it's already very, very low, but I can only imagine it would make that even lower.
My, just my final comment, as I want to express appreciation for the intentionality behind the introduction to Teaching One and Two and the recruitment of diverse candidates with the efforts to bring them back into our district.
Thank you.
So thank you for that.
Any other questions for Mr. Smith?
Yeah, most of mine have been answered, but, um, just on the whole cluster, or, you know, these clusters, it's, I guess, the way I would think about it, it's kind of primarily a tool to help students pick their electives and maybe which science class they take or which math class they take. Um, and it doesn't really bind them into anything, right? If they, you know, try the teaching and they don't like it, they could do IT or they could do something.
Exactly. Yep, absolutely.
Okay. And then, um, the, the course, uh, the, um, opportunities that are, that are at, um, TCD, those will be part of this, I would imagine.
Those will continue, yes. Yep. The TCD courses are built into the clusters, yeah.
Um, you know, I do, I, I really like the teaching piece of it. Probably just, I have a college sophomore who's, you know, studying education and I remember, because we've been talking about pathways for a while, I've asked her a number of times and she really got there kind of on her own. I mean, I'm, I'm very happy with the education she got in the district, but it, um, and fortunately, it seems like that's the path she's going to stay on. But it would have been really nice for her to, to take, to have some of that exposure in high school because, you know, we all know how many kids end up changing their majors in, in college. It's really good. And I really do, um, think the emphasis on the trade, trades and manufacturing apprenticeships is, is really good. Um, cognizant of being careful that we don't push a certain segment of the population that way, but there's kids that are, you know, that are good students that don't want to go to college. And so I think that, that is, um, really good. And I think, um, you know, I appreciate all the work on this.
Other questions or comments for Mr. Smith?
I had one question and most of them were answered. Um, it was, when the career interest survey, is that given every year or what, what academic year is that given?
So it's given sophomore year, uh, to all students. So, and we've done that for some time, uh, where they, they do have that career cluster that's identified for them. Uh, but this year, next year, we're going to have all students do that. So we can catch up and, and be able to, um, capture all of our students.
So an incoming freshman will have had the interest survey taken in eighth grade or as a freshman?
Uh, so, under, under our, our plan, they would do it in eighth grade, but currently it's, it's sophomore year.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I have a couple of questions and comments. So I want to piggyback on one thing that Dr. Yuboa had asked, because I'm not quite sure I still understand. So for fees, we're not necess, we're charging a minimal fee to students and there's get, being able to get dual credit. Am I understanding that correctly? Like for, for them to take Teaching One and Teaching Two, they're not paying the actual college credit?
Correct. They're not paying the college tuition.
That, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get at. So, so this is, and then the difference between a dual credit and AP, dual credit is you get the credit based upon how you did the entire class versus how you did on the AP test, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then one other thing in, in regards to the exploration of other COD courses, are we looking at surveying students to see what their interests are? Because I know that it's constantly, the COD is constantly changing and updating and current and, you know, just rather than maybe us as a district picking, are we allowing our students to kind of give us some feedback and direction in that area? Would be something I would hope we would be doing. Okay. Any other questions or comments on that?
Chris, you triggered a question. So is, and is there any thought in the future of offering some of these experiences, whether they be credit or not, over the summer? Like some sort of summer experience for our students? Or even a class that, so what I, what I've experienced and seen other students experience, um, freshman and sophomore year, they, some students can't even fit in the required classes. Um, so there's just not that time. If you are in band, orchestra, chorus and a language, you have no time for health. So you have to take health over the summer or as a junior. So I'm just wondering if we can open up some of these career opportunities during the summer for our students?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great, uh, question. And certainly by, uh, by need, we expanded some of the summer opportunities. Uh, last year, I think we, we continued to look at how we can take advantage of summer as an opportunity. I, I think when you, especially when you look at some of the specific career-based experiences, apprenticeship intern experiences, those are likely going to come in as students are a little older in their, their high school career. So that probably is later in their career when they do typically have a little more kind of choice and opportunity in the, in the schedule versus freshman sophomore year where that schedule may be a bit more locked in than it is, you know, as students get older. But I think, you know, again, one of the things we've learned is, you know, anytime, anywhere learning, right? I think, you know, as, as we've looked at what technology has been able to do for us is it's opened up some opportunities to look at kind of when learning can take place different. And I think that would include summer.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Um, next is discussion item is our Vision 2022 dash data dashboard and learning acceleration. Mrs. Murphy?
Okay. So good evening, Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to once again talk to you about student learning, our district dashboard and learning acceleration. I have four guiding questions for our presentation this evening, and we're going to start with our first one, which is which dashboard components related to student learning are able to be updated? And so the, on your dashboard, there are eight components that are associated with student learning that we provide regular updates to the board each year in October. At this point in time, this year, we are able to, um, update you on half of those. I've put those into the left-hand side of the screen. We are unable to update you on these other areas, either not having the data or it's delayed. In the, um, areas we're going to be able to update you on in our core of the presentation this evening are three in the high school space and then also attendance. We've also enhanced this presentation this year to really have an equity focus. And, um, here you're going to see that we are going to be talking about each of those components by demographic groups. We're also going to be looking at this information over a three-year period. So you have a point of reference prior to the pandemic and then also information for the past two years that have really been disrupted. I also thought it was really important for you to understand what our current enrollment is by demographics. And so our white, um, group continues to be our largest student group, Latino next. Um, in terms of multilingual learners, that stayed consistent at about ten percent. Students with IEPs is between fifteen and sixteen percent. And our, and our low income percentage has also, uh, remained pretty much the same with an uptick of one percent this, this school year. Moving into our next guiding question would be what can we learn from the results? So the first component that I'm going to report out to you is graduation rate. We began reporting this on our dashboard in 2015. At that point in time, the graduation rate was ninety-two percent. Um, this past year, we actually had the highest level at ninety-five percent. This is certainly an area of celebration for our staff, our students, our families, that despite the pandemic, we were able to bring so many students across the finish line with that graduation. Let's dive into this by demographic groups. So here you're going to see the information that was really talked about in the last presentation Dr. Schuler referenced, that, um, there's two areas I wanted to draw the board's attention to. First would be multilingual learners and second is students with IEPs. And so as Dr. Schuler mentioned, our students that are in the transition program have the opportunity to stay with us through their twenty-second year. So the year that they turn twenty-two, they can remain in the transition program for that entire school year. So they are not counted as a graduate at, you know, at eighteen at that point. We also have our multilingual learners. You see that that looks lower. So, and this is really because we have moved into our high schools at various points of their, you know, having different educational experiences. So they move, may move in as a junior with no past educational experience or credits to apply to, um, our schools. And so we want to support those students so that they can be successful in their future. And so that's why they may be staying with us longer. So moving into that next component is another topic we've already discussed this evening. You're going to receive some additional information here. And so, um, that is advanced placement and dual credit courses. So currently we do offer twenty advanced placement courses and we have had something that is called AP Inspiring Excellence, which is a program that's focused on recruiting efforts and summer bridge programming. With regards to dual credit, I've listed here what those current courses are that we have in our high schools. Um, and as we mentioned before, I did, uh, we talked about previously, I did put a definition here. So it provides that opportunity for students to enroll in college-level coursework and secure, secure credits, both at high school and college level simultaneously. And I also referenced again what we just previously discussed, that in November, we would be bringing a proposal to the board, um, for Teaching One and Two, which would be dual credit courses. So here you're going to see that longitudinal data with regards to the percent of graduates with a C or higher in at least one AP or dual credit course historically. So we began reporting this metric to the board in 2017. You can see that we have remained constant, um, at that, about that seventy percent over the last, um, few years that we've been reporting this. Um, it's certainly a point of celebration that we remained constant, um, throughout that pandemic years. Here you'll see that information broken out by demographic groups. This is certainly an area of pride for our school district and has been a focus of both of our high schools. There has been an enormous effort. This is you, Dr. Yuboa mentioned it earlier, um, that we have, our schools have worked very hard to do targeted recruitment, um, especially for underserved populations into AP courses. And so you can see that in the different demographic groups, there's certainly been consistent representation. Even through the pandemic, this has been a focal point for our schools. Uh, while it's certainly a point of pride, there's certainly areas for growth for us in this space. And really that area for, of growth for our school district is really in the dual credit space, especially when we, um, I'm just going to go back to this slide really right here. Really at this point in time, to be able to see an uptick on this, this graph, we really need to expand the number of dual credit courses that we would be offering. So next we're going to move into freshmen and track. So freshman and track is a predictor of high school success. Students who finish ninth grade on track are four times as likely to graduate from high school as Students who finish ninth grade on track are four times as likely to graduate from high school as students who are not on track. I actually want to like dive into the state metric here for a moment because it's, it's pretty important that we understand. This is actually reported at the state level and this is how it's measured. So it is a metric for first-time ninth-grade students who have earned at least five course credits without failing more than a half a semester in any core subject. And the core subjects are defined as English, math, science, and social studies. We do report this information to the state in the summer. So even if our students have done credit recovery in the summer, that is not applied to the final information that is reported to the state. So we began reporting this to the board in 2014. And we, our schools had made considerable efforts to ensure more freshmen were on track over the, since 2014. When that, we first began reporting that at 91%. And as you can see this past school year, that data does not look where we want it to be. So we're going to dive into that. So our teams have engaged in root cause analysis as to why there was this decrease. First, many of the students that we had reported as not on track were fully virtual and had attendance concerns. Those attendance concerns are actually, 24% of the students actually met our metric of attending school for 90% of the year. We also had, we also prioritized our juniors and seniors to bring them back first in person four days a week. And we also worked very hard to prioritize our juniors and our seniors for credit recovery work to ensure graduation. Hence that 95% that we looked at earlier and also to ensure their post-secondary enrollment. And, and another big component to this is the pandemic disrupted our systems for analyzing course placement during semester one for freshmen. Our teams spent a considerable amount of time working with our teachers and discussing how our students are doing during that first semester to ensure that there is proper course placement so we can make adjustments and ensure success. And back to that idea of that metric. That point five failure, they have that latitude in there. We don't want them to, you know, we don't want them to fail anything. But there's also this idea that we want to switch their course so that they are more successful in the future and also second semester. I do want to point out though, for the board, that although the, we know that student success from ninth grade is more likely to result in graduation. The research shows us that. I'm also going to say here in District 200, you can be guaranteed that our teams work exceptionally hard to make sure every student crosses that graduation point. So you can see here, we were at a similar point back in 2014. But that graduating class was much higher than the freshman on track at that point. I also wanted to show you this information by demographic. And you're certainly going to see our students of color were most impacted this past year. And also our multilingual learners, our students that are low-income were, were certainly the most impacted with this metric. So the last area I'm able to report out to you tonight has to do with attendance. I have come to the board multiple times throughout the last year, talking to you about the concerns we had about attendance during the last year and the challenges we faced. You are going to see that there was a change in that result overall. Once again, our, our students of color, our students from targeted neighborhoods were most impacted in the attendance space. But I want to reemphasize the hard work that our schools did place in this actual space last year. So they were watching this. They were bringing students back four days a week based on this information. They were working, Danielle Moran was working with buildings and identifying students in the virtual academy that were not successful, did not have strong attendance. And we were encouraging those students to come back in person. You would also remember when we were full, fully virtual, our school, our secondary schools identified students that needed to be in-person in our buildings every day because of this. Usually at this, on this presentation, I'm reporting out state assessment data for you. At this point in time, I'm pressing this information along. ISBE has reported the following data are delayed due to COVID. That would be our Illinois Assessment of Readiness or the IAR results that our students in grades three through eight participate in in SAT. Those are delayed at this point in time. I also do want to mention that we, there was limited participation in the state assessments this past year. This is different than past years. So students who were in a fully virtual environment were not required by the state to return to take that test. But we did have some that did. So that, that participation looks different this past year. We do anticipate being able to report these results in December, though. So I'm going to move next into our guiding question about the results of the most recently administered academic assessments. Our elementary and middle school students take district assessments three times a year in reading and math. And so that pre-test assessment window has closed. And here you're going to see the information that we have. We've reported this out for you as, this is the reading information right now. So we've reported this out to you as a mean and a median. And you're going to see this once again by the demographic groups and also the overall results. You're going to see here that overall, reading has remained fairly consistent even in, with the disruptions. And this is really similar to the research that we are seeing nationwide where that idea of reading was something that was able, students were able to continue and achieve at similar levels, even though the schooling experience had changed. Next, we have that, that same information, our pre-test information for math. Again, once again, reported out by the mean and the median. When you look at that overall percentages, math has been very historically low on this assessment. Because you have to remember, this is a pre-test. And so this is all of the information that students would be learning throughout that grade level in, in that class. You, I, I believe too that this also supports the urgency that we have put on math and the, and why we have put additional resources for math this year to support our students. Especially the important idea that those concepts build upon one another from year to year. And it's really essential that our students have the information and recover the unfinished learning that they have due to the pandemic. My final guiding question is how do these results align to our current learning acceleration plans? And how are we enhancing our plans? Once again, you'll see the six key priorities that we have outlined for our learning acceleration plans. With regards to app, our attendance metric. Certainly the most important piece of information here is that our students are all back in person five days a week. That will certainly help our attendance, but there are some other action items here that are going to support that. We have created a system for students in quarantine to participate in remote learning. If they're participating in remote learning, they are considered present. We are implementing tests to say, to ensure more in-person student attendance days. And we will continue to monitor student absenteeism. I'll also remind the board, we did talk at the last meeting, we, I, I presented and we had discussion about the additional resources that have been put in place to support our learning acceleration plan. So once again, those, those resources that we put into place with the quarantine tutors, the stipends for our staff to support students that are in quarantine. And also our Director of Elementary Instruction and Virtual Learning, Mrs. Moran, who is in place at the district office to support these plans. With regard to our graduates earning a C or higher in at least one AP course or dual credit course. You're going to see here, we're going to continue our recruitment efforts through AP Inspiring Excellence. And so that's really been very successful for us and that we need to continue that. We also, as we talked about, the course proposal for additional dual credit courses coming to your way in November. And the additional resource we do have here that we would continue with is our AP Summer Bridge Programming. Freshman on track is a place where you're going to see a pretty detailed action plan here with regards to the data that you were presented with tonight. So it's going to be, it's always been important that we're regularly monitoring our students' grades. But this is going to also be for, very intensely on those soft, those students who are sophomores and also that current freshman class. We have some other course opportunities to support these students with supervised study hall and resource periods. So when we talk about supervised study hall, that's, students are scheduled for that who may be identified as at-risk. And it gives them the opportunity to receive check-ins, study skills, executive functioning. Resource periods really acts in the replacement of access class. And this is where these students are specifically targeted to receive tutoring support from their teachers as class. We've also worked to strengthen our student support services. And so our teams have talked about the needs of our students and how they can be more proactive based on what they have identified as needs and supporting them from that whole child approach. And of course, credit recovery coursework. Once again, I've outlined those additional resources that we have provided for this support. Many of them being funded through our federal relief opportunities. I am going to draw your attention to one on here, edgenuity and grad point coursework. That's been very beneficial for us to allow students to make up that coursework, sometimes in a supervised study hall. I'm also going to say, it really well, it well aligns with that idea of accelerating or integrating. Because that coursework can allow students to not have to necessarily take, retake all portions of the course. But really take the sections that, or of the standards that they need to make up. And so it can be more abbreviated and allows us to move more quickly through that recovery process. For K-8 reading, our action plan is really to implement those targeted interventions, monitor our growth. And at the K-2 level, it's really a focus on those foundational reading skills to ensure our students have that, that foundational knowledge that they need to become early readers. That when they transition into third grade, they're reading more complex text. And then once again, as we discussed at our last meeting, last year, many of these resources needed to shift due to our multiple programming. And so those resources have all been returned to provide that addition, that specialized support. Our reading specialist, our multilingual specialist, our bilingual specialist, our PACE reading has returned. And then we have stipends for intensive tutoring that we are going to be utilizing at buildings as well to support our students. And last is math. This, this is an area we have spoken about multiple times. We're really that focus on best practices for addressing unfinished learning. And with that focus on standards mastery and differentiation. And we've certainly been very thankful for the resources that we've been able to provide our schools with additional math interventionists, math coaches, and even at the middle school for the first time, having that additional math support. So at this time, I'll open up the conversation for questions or discussions.
Questions or comments for Mrs. Murphy?
I'll start. I thank you so much for all this information. You know, when we were going through this over the last year and a half, I know as an administration and as a board, this was always the question. And we knew, you know, some of these results are, unfortunately, we knew, you know, some of this was happening. But I, I also want to reiterate what you said in your presentation that, you know, I know we, as a board, you know, through the great communication from Dr. Schuler, that our teachers were going way above and beyond to get these kids engaged and to get the kids back who we knew we were losing, you know? And I, I know that for a fact because I, in our teacher, in my teacher group, talked about actually going to a student's home. You know, to try to see where they were and to assist with them and assist them. So I know that, you know, it, this was not due to lack of effort in our district. And, and the in-person opportunities that we were able to implement last year were, I remember doing analysis across our competitive, or, I'm sorry, comparative districts. And that when you looked at instructional, actual in-person instructional ti, instructional time with the teacher, direct instruction time, we were at the top. And so I, I just think that's so important to reiterate and to remember as we look at the, at this information that this is not, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, this is not unique to District 200. And that we were, as far as instructional time with our students, that we were, like I said, when I looked at the number of minutes, because, you know, every, every district was doing this differently with blocking and certain days in, certain days out and that kind of thing. That when you looked at direct instruction as far as minutes per class, we were at the top of that. So, so I, I really appreciate the transparency of the information, the breakdown of the information across the different, different demographics. I think it's really important to see. And let's see, I do have a few questions. With the, with the dual credit, and I agree that we need to, you know, look at more options to do that. But correct me if I'm wrong, again, my oldest is a sophomore, so I'm not quite to the college area yet with this. But does it, when you take a dual credit, it doesn't necessarily mean that every college will accept that credit. Is that right or is that wrong?
So again, dual credit is actually transcripted credit. AP, you have to take the test if you get a certain score. That's dependent on the college you're going to as to whether or not that coursework will apply. But dual credit is actually transcripted credit still as you move outside of the state of Illinois. There may be some specific college stipulations. But that is the difference between dual credit and AP is that that's actually college transcripted credit.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that clarification. I apologize for my misunderstanding of that. Thank you for that. So regarding the students for the freshman on track that we, you know, knew were, were having trouble last year. Did we get, are all those students back? Or I guess what percentage of those students are back? Like did we, did we lose, like really lose anybody?
We, some students moved away.
Okay, okay.
We had seven students that moved away.
Okay. But everyone else is back in our schools and we're?
Or at an outplacement?
Okay, okay, okay. And then as far as like on the kind of, on that same point with the attendance. You had later on in the, we, you said you'll continue to monitor the chronic absenteeism. Or where are we as far with that compared to pre-pandemic? Are we still having issues with, with absenteeism or is it, or is it? Or is it, or is it, does it match what we were seeing before the pandemic? Do you know what I mean?
So, you're asking what we're currently seeing this year?
Yeah.
It's much better than last year because our students are in-person.
Is it comparable to pre-pandemic though?
Honestly, I, I would need to do that investigation to provide you an accurate answer.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just curious to see if there's still, you know, if we, I guess, there's, you know, some motivation issues, if there's other family issues that are, you know, still happening because of the pandemic that are preventing kids from coming to school. I'm just curious if, you know, if, if it's still a little higher, you know, a bit higher than it?
I, I will say, we meet with all of our administrative teams regularly. And this is not what I have heard from our administrative teams.
Okay, okay. No, that's great to hear.
And but this was something that was a constant conversation with our administrative teams last year.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Not perfect, but. With, and I, I wrote this down and I think you might have answered it, but I just want to, with the resource periods, is that a, do we encourage the students to go to those resources? Or is it like, they're here if you'd like the, you know?
No, it's a combination of both. But our students who are identified as at-risk are intentionally placed in that area.
Yeah, okay. That, that was my hope. I'm, I'm, again, I know we've already talked about it. I'm just so glad to see all the additional supports with math and, and reading at, at our schools and that we're able to use our funds to, to put all those people in our buildings. I think that's huge. And, and the intensive tutoring as well, I think is a huge piece to this. So, again, I just want to say thank you for putting together such comprehensive data and being so transparent about the different areas that, you know, like you said, we do definitely have some areas that we need to focus on and, and hopefully get back to where we were pre-pandemic. But, you know, I, I just really appreciate all the efforts that we put in over the last 18 months. And, and I think we did a great job holding what we, what we could. You know, like I said, this wasn't, unfortunately, we, you know, we knew this kind of information was going to come. But I, I think we, we did, we did a great job holding, you know, like I said, what we could. So, thank you for all this.
Other questions or comments for Mrs. Murphy?
I have one. I, I think I'm aware that, at least at the high school level, transfers in are more vulnerable. Could this intentionality be applied to sophomores, juniors, and seniors?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for mentioning that. That is absolutely a part, Julie Ozmickowski, who is our Director for School Improvement, has already spoken about that. This freshman on track is really an area that she will focus on with that school improvement space and collaborating with our, both of our high schools. And she said, it's not only that student, those students who we know need credit recovery, it's our students that are moving in that we're going to have to be very intentional with as well. And always have been. Our teams always have been.
Any other questions or comments for Mrs. Murphy?
I have a couple. To follow up on what Susan said about, have we lost students? So, are there students that we don't know if they moved? We don't know, like, that just disappeared?
Of, like, so?
Just in the district, because I think, I feel like our numbers are down a little bit. But is that, was that expected that we would drop a little or?
No, so, we, we definitely know some students have withdrawn, either for a homeschool situation, a private school situation. Our biggest decrease in numbers this year is actually with our kindergarten numbers. That is pretty consistent with what we've seen across the state. Our kindergarten numbers this year are about 100 lower than what we would have anticipated with incoming kindergarten. So, that, that's the biggest place across our cohorts. There's not a consistent pattern and some grade levels were up over what we were last year and some were down over what we were last year. But kindergarten and, and first grade is where we saw the biggest adjustment. And actually, we saw a lot of students come back into first grade that were not in kindergarten last year and, and came back in this year. But then, we saw a, a lower kindergarten enrollment than typical.
Okay. Have we seen students return from private schools?
We have seen some. Again, I think it seems a, a little contingent on grade levels. So, I think in some situations, if a student went to a private school and they're kind of near a transition point, I think some of them have stayed, perhaps to complete an elementary experience. So, again, even at our transition grades, we saw probably the biggest uptick in, like, kind of inflow back into the district, grade six, grade nine, is when we, we tended to, to see the, the biggest boost. So, not, not a consistent pattern across all grade levels. Truly, you know, it, it fluctuates a little bit up or down.
Okay, thank you. Couple of questions from Alyssa. When, speaking to the intensive tutoring and credit recovery, specifically intensive tutoring, is there a threshold? I'm, I'm thinking more maybe elementary and middle school, maybe a little more focused on middle school, a threshold on those local assessment tests which would identify a student as needing intensive tutoring? And is that then provided to those students?
So, I want to make sure I ask, have your question clear. Are you, is your question, are we using that data to identify students?
Yes, I think, I think I'm just trying to make sure that we're not missing students. Yes, are we using that data? And is there, like, is there a specific number that would identify that student for the intensive tutoring versus some of that coaching interventionist support?
The intent with intensive tutoring is really to allow our schools to capture more students that might not be able to be serviced through those programs. But teachers are identifying them as potentially needing some additional, having some additional needs, could be temporary with certain topics and units. There could be flexibility in that space. Schools are actually currently in the process of putting their plans together based on individually what they've identified. They have participated in some data dives, looking at their, their pre-assessment information. And they're starting to put together, who are those students who may need more based on a variety of factors?
Okay, so if they're putting that together, when do they plan to?
Implement?
Yes.
I will provide you additional updates on that.
Can I just ask clarification though? Because I, I want to make sure that's not, not kind of send us wrong direction. Intervention is taking place?
Thank you, yes, absolutely. Intervention is taking place, but the?
So, we, we're continuing to capture students that needed, need to be added to that intervention bucket, perhaps for short-term, long-term need, does not mean these interventionists that are on here are not yet seeing students. They are actively engaged with students. But there, there's that, I think to your point, there's an ongoing evaluation based not only on the district assessment, but teacher assessment information as well, right? Teachers on a regular basis are assessing progress and needs of their students and adding students either to kind of longer-term intervention needs or short-term needs. So, that, that case, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that was clear that we're not saying we haven't started providing any of that support or intervention yet.
Thank you. That, that does help. The individualized tutoring, however, so is that ongoing too? That kids would be added to that? And then, do we have enough staff that is interested? Is, I'm assuming that it's an out-of-school day provision?
Yeah, we've posed this to our schools. Right now, they, they know that the funds are available for that. And they're in the, again, I'll mention, they're in the process of putting plans in place. So, we have said that that is really, could be before school, could be after school, potentially could be lunchtime or planned time at our elementary level if the, you know, student or staff could, that was the best available time for them and that would, that worked with the families as well. So, we want to be sure we're providing supports to our students who need them. And we want to provide that flexibility and how it can be done.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Mrs. Murphy?
I just have one more, I think, quick one. I'm really interested in this chart of percent of graduates with a C or higher or at least one AP dual-credit. So, this, this might point to a gap. This chart would. Because, let's say, the black students, percentage of the total black students. So, a lower percentage of black students are enrolled in these courses. Okay, so, can you explain the huge growth in the multilingual enrollment? Was there any, do you have any idea how that happened? Because that's, it looks like the most significant growth.
Well, we, we have had conversations about that. Some, first of all, I would say targeted efforts in identifying students has been one piece of that puzzle that we, I would also say, recently, the state has adjusted their criteria to exit from the multilingual programming. So, quite frankly, we have students who are very proficient in the four-language domains that are just missing the mark according to access. And we do not want to deny that opportunity to be in an AP course. And so, I believe that that percentage of multilingual students has kind of adjusted because of that criteria. And that's why you see that uptick on that particular bar.
I was wondering whether I had something to do with that. Just one more quick one. I was at Sandberg School this morning and there were teachers in math data dialogues over the, over national math assessments. But I don't see that here. We are, I talked to?
Yeah, that, so, I can, do you want clarification on?
Sure.
So, that's another assessment tool that we've used that really aligns with our progress monitoring system with the FastBridge. And it gives us some national percentiles too. And so, it's, it's another piece of data that we use. It's just not one that we've reported out on our dashboard. But we've used it over the last two years, especially with all students. It was always an option for teachers to be able, and schools to be able to use flexibly. But we've really made it a priority to use over the last two years to make sure we had more data and information on our students because of the pandemic.
So, in the future, would it be included in some, in a presentation like this?
I, I think those are conversations that we certainly have, especially with strategic planning. Right now, we report out the metrics that sit with our dashboard.
Any other questions or comments for Mrs. Murphy?
I have one more, Chris. Going back to the freshman on track to graduate. So, the state metric says, this is the percentage of first-time grade students who have earned at least five course credits without failing more than a half a credit, or half course credit. Is that lower than, I feel like five course credits is lower than what our district expectation is?
Yeah, we, we identify students as sophomores with six course credits.
Okay, so there may have been more students that weren't captured in the on-track to graduate according to our standards, correct? Potentially, maybe, or?
Potentially.
That's all. Thank you.
I, I just have one question. With the intensive tutoring, I just want to be sure because we have that ability and we have the, the money right now to be able to do this. And it's so crucial the earlier we get in there that we do this. How are we communicating that to parents, especially to, to really stress the need for that?
I, I, I believe that's an excellent question. So, right now, our, what, because our schools are putting together programming, I think we have that opportunity to be very specific and diligent in that area and space and really think about that critically. Because we do know, we reached out to many families for the summer opportunities and not everyone seized that opportunity. We're certainly hopeful that people would seize it during the school year. A lot of the reasons why they deny in the summer is kids need a break or there's summer, you know, there's vacations and things like that. So, I hope the fact that this is during the school year will help. But I believe you've brought up a very crucial point that I need to work on with our teams is how we are communicating that with our families.
I'm thinking even language barriers and different things like that, that we're making sure that we are removing those barriers and, and, you know, trying to be sure that we are getting. Because it is so crucial, the, the sooner we can get that intervention, those interventions in place. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next. We have the discussion of IASB resolutions and direction for delegate voting. Before I go around and ask each board member if there are any resolutions that you do not agree with the direction of the resolution committee, Susan is our delegate and has been the delegate before and is going to just kind of explain process and, and what actually like a resolution means in that, so.
Okay, so, this will be my third year being the delegate. And so, with IASB resolutions, what we as a school board are voting on when, when I go into the delegate assembly is how IASB will use their resources and their funds to basically lobby for legislation in our legislature. I've always felt that this is the closest we get as a school board to potential legislation. And, and keep in mind that as we talk through these, and it will be a majority vote as far as our board. So, in my experience on the board the last two years, it's rare, you know, not always unanimous as far as how we agree. And it's a majority vote, just like anything else that we do. And that's how I will vote, is what the majority of the board votes on per, per resolution. And so, when I go into the assembly, it, they take a vote. And it's actually like a hand count vote. Like, we have, like, we get these little, they're almost like little fans. And when they go to vote, they'll say, "All the yays, raise your mark." And if it's like, clear that the majority of the assembly is in favor, or not in favor, you know, of a resolution, they don't do an actual count. They'll just be like, "Majority vote, pass." But if the, the paddles go up and it's sort, it's closer as far as yea and nay, they'll actually do a, a hand count. And it literally is, you have people going row by row, counting the fans that are up. So, which I thought was interesting. But, which is why I actually kind of liked it last year when it was online and it was, you, you just pressed a button to vote. But it is a very manual process. And so, if a resolution passes, keep in mind, it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to become law. It just means that this is where IASB is going to put resources behind trying to promote these, these issues to our legislatures, legislators, to potentially become law. And so, that's what we're doing when I go into the delegate assembly. Once we decide as a board, we'll discuss it tonight. We'll probably discuss it, you know, a few things next meeting as well before, that whatever we decide as a board, that's how I vote. I don't go in there, nothing changes. It's like, I don't go rogue or anything like that. Like, I vote the way that we as a board have decided to vote. What they're doing this year, and it, it came, it came out of last year that, with it being virtual, that they will actually have information sessions that I will attend. They're virtual again this year. But I, the first one is on November 3rd that I will attend. And it basically is a time for all the delegates to discuss these resolutions, to ask questions of the submitting district or of IASB around why they supported something, why they didn't. Like I said, the, the submitting district can provide information about it. And so, some of the discussion we have tonight can be like, we might decide we need more information to make a final decision. And I, and during these information sessions, I can ask those questions. So, I'm sorry, I haven't been close to my microphone here. So, keep that in mind too, that if we can, we may come to a conclusion here where it's like, we just need some more information and I can find that out. And, and then as far as? And, and then as far as how this works, as far as, so anything that the, that IASB, the committee has recommended to do adopt, will start out on a consent agenda. And what will happen is during the delegate assembly, that's when someone will say, I want to pull off number three, I want to pull off number five. And so what that means, just like we kind of do in our meetings here, we can pull off something off the consent agenda and we can discuss that separately if we want. So that's how that will work, is that districts will go up and pull something off. And, and I can do that too. I mean, if we just, if we disagree, disagree with, with the committee's recommendation during the assembly, I can go up and say, I would like to pull off number one. And, and so then that forces it to an individual vote. What I don't know this year, and I'm sure I'll learn it on the 3rd, is that what happened two years ago when it was in person is there was actually discussion before each resolution. Like people, they had two microphones and you could go line up and people could make their case to, you know, but I, I, I'm kind of hoping actually, that I'm thinking that these information sessions are going to replace, that prefer how we do it, where we have a discussion, it's a majority vote. But I actually think some districts just send their delegate in and the delegate votes. And, you know, I've heard of some districts have the delegate, like I would come in and say, this is how I think we should vote on all of these and the board just votes on, and that, that doesn't seem, that doesn't seem right to me either. But my point in saying that is when people are talking during the delegate assembly, it's not going to change my vote because we've already decided how we're going to vote. And so I'm kind of wondering if, because of last year, if IASB is replacing that time with these information sessions that I'll attend. So. Is that it?
Yeah.
I think that covers it. And so, oh, I do want to say one more thing. So for, because I want to pull one off here, that, that the IASB, when they recommend do not adopt, so unless the district who submitted it appeals that decision, that, that resolution will not come to a vote. It's basically dead. But if it, if it is appealed, then what happens is they ask first procedurally, do we want to call it to a vote? It's kind of strange. So you, they, they want to call it to a vote too, they actually take a first vote just to see if people want to even bring it to the floor to vote on it. And then if it does or it doesn't, if it does get passed, then they'll, then it will be actually voted. But if it doesn't make it past that first vote, it won't be called. So do not adopt that if it's not appealed, it, it won't come to a vote at all. It's just dead on arrival, so.
Susan, the appeal, do we know that now or is that appeal going to happen?
It can happen up to, I believe, seven days before or something like that. So I think if there was something that we were really on the fence about, we could figure that out. But I, I think it's seven, like they, it's like a week or two before, so they have some time. I, I know the one that I'm going to pull off that, I actually know the person at the district and I, I asked her, I said, did you appeal it? And she said, yes, we did. But I noticed in here there weren't, because last year on the document, it noted what was appealed. And this one did, I don't believe had any of those notations on it. And it's maybe that the district didn't appeal it in time of printing. But, and I actually, you know what, I should have, before tonight, I'm sorry, I should have checked IASB's website to see if there was maybe an updated document that had appeals in it. But yeah, so, okay.
So, so, so what we're going to do tonight is I'm going to ask each of you if there is a resolution you do not agree with the decision to adopt, correct? Or do you need to go in there with the ones that say do not adopt? You need, you need all that information. So I'm just going to go around the table. I'm going to ask you, we're only going to talk about the ones where board members feel they do not agree with the decision of the IASB Resolution Committee. Just going back to just clarifying what Susan said. This is for lobbying power and I know we've had this discussion before. You know, there is only so much time and there's so much energy and so much money that is involved with lobbying power. So why don't we just say, go for it, lobby everything? Because there just isn't that time. And so we just want to be sure when we're saying this, that we have some strong belief in that that's behind it. So Mary, I'm going to start with you. You can just read numbers if there's ones that you don't want. And so that's why we talk about, we make sure we talk about everything. So which ones, are, are there any resolutions that you do not agree with what the committee has said? You can just tell me numbers.
I oppose two.
Okay.
And I have questions about, I, I may oppose three and four.
So Mary, two, three, and four.
Do you want my question?
No, we're just going to go around and get them all first so that we know which ones we're going to talk about tonight. Do you have others besides two, three, and four?
Okay, let me add them now.
I want any one of them that you want to talk about or?
I have a question about seven and a question about 13.
Okay.
And I have 11 and 12, that is the opposite.
That you think you want the opposite?
IASB did not support and I.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, any that you disagree with.
Anything that you disagree with.
Disagree with the recommendation.
Okay. Dave?
Two, four, five, and eight. And four, I'm not definitely, certainly against, definitely against, but I wanted to talk.
Angela?
I just want to clarify. So the, the resolutions that the committee says recommends do not adopt could change. There could be an appeal.
There could be an appeal.
Yes.
Could change.
Yes. So we want to have Susan ready to go with whatever we feel. Now we still.
Don't get too caught up in that.
Okay.
If you disagree with the recommendation, if it says do not adopt and you're like, I think they should adopt that, say, we'll, we'll discuss it.
Okay. That's better. So number five and 13, and then I just had a question on 21 and 23.
Okay, so five, 13, 21, and 23. Susan?
I have, sorry, I'm just writing mine down here. I have two, nine, 11, 12, 15.
Okay, so, so, so two, nine.
Two, nine, 11, 12, 15, 16. And some of those I have stronger opinions on than others.
16. I have Brad's, Rob's, and mine. So the first one we're going to talk about is number two. We have six of the seven board members that do not agree.
Okay, I, I would just like to make a couple of, just quick comments on that, that I think four of the board members here know that this is a big one for me and, but I'm not going to go into my six pages of notes on this. But I just would like to share that in, this is in a resolution, word for word, exactly from 2019, that was on the resolution. The ask is word for word the same as 2019. Our board opposed it in 2019 and it was voted down at the assembly 198 to 249.
We have six board members that do not agree.
Okay. I just wanted to say, all right.
Um, next one up is number three, Mary, school board compensation. You had a question or comment?
So is this one that they support and I have questions, right?
So this one is they, they recommend do not adopt.
Oh, okay. So I just wanted to make a comment that the idea behind it I do support, which is a more increasing access to school board representatives, like it's an equity thing. I just think compensating people who have made it to the board isn't going to solve the problem. So I don't know if there's room for discussion of how to rewrite the thing in order to accomplish what the thing claims to want to do, or that's just for another.
That district has to make that decision if they want to rewrite.
Okay, so as it's written, I would say no, which is in agreement. So I'll cross that off.
Then you're in agreement? Okay.
Chris, I'm so sorry. Can you go back to number two because I'm confused? So we are saying that we recommend not to adopt?
Correct. Yes.
So what is that?
Six of seven board members do not want this to be adopted.
So what, what is that saying? I, can we?
So what we're saying is, is we do not want volunteers in the school, anybody to, in the school to be in a, in a, teachers to be armed, for example.
Okay, I wonder if I'm reading the wrong, because I.
Two is the safety protection, school student safety and protection plan by Mercer County.
Right, and so it says the submitting district, I see. Okay.
They're having a hard time hiring SROs to be in their schools and they would like to be able to offer concealed carry by, could be teachers.
Okay. I'm reading a different, I, I'm reading part of the rationale from the district, so that's where I'm, okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay.
All right, so, I'm sorry, can we, I just want to make sure as we go along here.
Yep.
So, so number.
Number one is as is.
Yep.
Number two.
Is opposed.
Is opposed.
And number three.
Three, Mary, you're, you're okay with as is, or, I mean?
Yes.
So three.
Because it's opposed?
Yeah.
Yeah. Number four, board member childcare reimbursement. We have four of us that have, want to talk about that one, that what they're recommending is do adopt. Does anybody want to chime in on that?
I support this because I know myself, I ran into this. I know when I, before I was on the board and like to come to board meetings, I, they obviously weren't virtual and that was always a consideration that I needed to get a babysitter to do it. And when I ran for the board, that was a conversation I frankly had with my husband that I'm like, these are, because our kids are still young enough at that point, we were kind of on the edge of not really being able to leave them home alone, but that, you know, he, he would need to be home on nights of board meetings. And I think that it, that can really be an issue for women in particular, quite frankly. And I don't think it's, I think it's something to definitely consider. Now remember that this is what they would lobby for. What this resolution said is, isn't necessarily what the law would be. I mean, I definitely have some questions about it and some concerns, like for example, if there is a, a partner or a spouse at home that could care for the children, I don't think someone should be paid to, because someone is there to care for the children. But if, if you, if someone genuinely doesn't have someone to care for their children and they have to pay for childcare, I don't, I, I think that's something to be considered, you know, and I don't want that to be a barrier for someone running for school board because it's, it is hard to be a school board member and to be a parent of young children. So that's why I support this, is because I, I ran into it a bit, so.
Anybody want to chime in on that?
Yeah, I, I appreciate what you're saying and I struggle with where do you draw the line of what's compensated for and what's not?
Right, and I agree that there's definitely some questions there.
I have a longer drive, I live farther away, so I got to pay more gas.
Oh, I don't think it's gas, but.
But I'm just saying, you know, what, what else, where, how do you draw the line that we're going to pay for childcare, but we're not going to pay for anything else for board members? That's where I struggle with this philosophically. I, I get what you're saying, but I also, that's where I struggle with, okay, only childcare, but not, you know. I'm a construction worker and now I need new clothes. So are, should my clothes be bought? I need new clothes to go to board meetings. I'm just making stuff up that comes to my mind. So my, my point in not those specific examples is philosophically, where do you draw the line for what would be, why only childcare and not other kinds of expenses?
Because it could be parent, you know, a lot of times people want parents on the school board. And not everybody, if your children aren't old enough to stay home alone, you know, then that can be, that's a barrier, you know, that can be a barrier to entry. And I just, I just think it's something to consider. You know, I, I, I don't, I don't believe that board members should be compensated, going back to the number three, but I think that portion of, of childcare, I, that, you know, that's something that, it's a lot, reason, it's a reason why a lot of people run for school board, is because they have children that they want to make their school district better for. And so that's what's different to me, you know, whether, if I live on the other side of the district and I live 40 minutes from where the meetings are, well, that, that's my, I know that going in, same with like where you work, you know what I mean? Like, you know, I can choose to work five minutes from my home or an hour and a half from my home, that, that's my choice. But to have children, you know, to have your children cared for, I, I just think that's something to consider, that that is becoming, as we're seeing just in the economy in general, that childcare is a barrier to entry for a lot of things. And I just think, you know, if we want more people to participate in a school board, that it's just, it's a barrier that we could potentially lift.
So where I sit on this one is I, I, I don't agree with it. But my thing is, I would rather be lobbying for school districts to help provide the opportunity on a, on a board meeting night. It could be clubs that have come involved, like we've, we've done that before for, you know, things like, I don't know that reimbursing for childcare, that's going to be, it's just, I, I, I feel like we can, we can offer creative solutions to help. If I remember correctly, this is also for people running for office, so during your campaign is also, they're, they're asking for that. And I, I just think that, you know, it's, I think there's other, there's other things that we can do to help with that, if that was really a barrier for families, that we could do something at, at board meetings. You know, I think going back to Engage 200, we had opportunities for, when parents came, they brought their kids in and we had student clubs that were helping there and watching kids, so that we got parents to come in for Engage 200.
But I, and just chime in. I think it's super valuable to have parents of young children, like to represent truly our community. And if you have a, a much younger child, bringing them to a meeting late at night, when some of our meetings have gone really far, to be in a building where they're not at home where they should be sleeping, I mean, that, that could be prohibitive. I mean, hopefully, I, I think I read it as not a guarantee, every one of us is going to get a check for childcare, I think truly when there's that need. Because it's nice to have more of the community have that opportunity to, to be represented. And I can see where that is such a deterrent when you have really young children.
So we can go with, Brad's okay with this one? Mary, where are you with this one?
Clarifying question, does it require districts to pay all board members with children reimbursement? I, I just wasn't.
Well, why don't we go back and have Susan ask questions on this one?
And remember that this, and I can clarify this, I mean, the way I've always understood it is that it, you know, the, the like real, I'm going back to this now, the real like specifics of it, you know, are not always like what you're, what you're voting on, it's the idea.
You're not voting on a specific plan, I think you're voting on a philosophy.
Right.
Yeah, so the philosophy is also for not only if you're on the board, if you're running for the board. It's during your campaigning also is, is specified within here, is what they're asking for, so for people running.
But I think it's, if you're running, it's allowing you to use your campaign funds for childcare. So not that the district or state is paying for your campaign childcare, because then we might have people running for free childcare. So I don't know that that would be extra money. It would, it would come from campaign, campaign funds that they raised.
So why don't we just, do you want Susan to get any more information? Or are you ready to say you are, you agree with it or you don't agree with it? What do we want to do? Is there, are there questions? Is there, are there questions that still need to be answered for this one, or are people ready to go?
I would like to know whether it would mandate districts to pay, I just, I, I'm supportive of the philosophy. I have questions about its implementation.
Well, there, we, we, it's, it's really only philosophy. So that's what we're, we're going with is, do you agree with this philosophy?
I agree with its stated intended outcome, wholeheartedly.
Okay, so Mary, you're in agreement with, you would like, with what the resolution committee is saying to adopt?
Sure.
Dave?
No.
No? Angela?
Um, yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And Brad's a yes, Rob and I are a no, so it's, it's a pass, we'll agree with what it says. Okay, remote virtual school board, open meetings, Dave and Angela, you both highlighted that one.
I, I, so the, the problem that I actually had with this was that it's allowing that to, for remote meetings to occur for closed meetings. Because I, I just feel that with a closed meeting remotely, you can't necessarily guarantee privacy. The unintended opening of a Zoom meeting to other people. So I, I don't like the fact that closed meetings is included in that. And then I also had a question about the, about the open part of it. The last line that says, let's see, it says, "To remove restricting remote participation to only times of personal illness, disability, employment, or family emergency." So it's taking away those qualifications, so it could really open up remote meetings to any time.
Yes.
Okay. Which I am not a super fan of that either, but my biggest problem is with the closed meetings being allowed to be remote for privacy reasons.
Privacy reasons? And, uh, Dave, you had?
Well, I just feel like these meetings should be held in person. The business meeting and the committee of the whole meetings should be held in person, except when there's exceptional circumstances like the two or three times we met via Zoom when the pandemic first started.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, and it's only because I did have, I asked the president of U46 this question, this is for, it's not saying get rid of the public meetings, it's saying right now, if I'm understanding correctly, you can only like, like call in if you are on business, you are ill, or there is a death in the family. This would allow an individual board member to call in, let's just say, the only week they can take for vacation because of whatever family schedule is, is the week of a board meeting, that they would be allowed to call in on a vacation day to be able to attend the meeting. We can find out and double check that, but I'm like 99% sure that's what.
Well, then if that's the case, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I still have a problem with the privacy. I think that's significant, I mean, how often have we been at home, at work on Zoom calls where you don't know who's in the background? We discuss some pretty sensitive issues and I, I think that's a legitimate concern, but that's my thought.
So we have one that's concerned about closed and do you, I mean, we can ask Susan double check, but I'm, I'm like 99% sure it's to be able to allow an individual board member to call in if they need to, that's not just those three topics.
Yeah, and again, with it being philosophy, if, the way I read this, we would be able to not allow closed session participation.
Even if we don't have.
Right, as a district, we could, we could do what you want.
Yes. So the, so the, we could, if that person was not allowed in person for closed session, we could say they're not allowed to call in for closed session.
So as a district, we could say that?
But it's really, understand that it's only for vacation, because right now they can call in for closed session if they are on business, if they are ill, or if there's been a death in the family. That's currently in the law, that they can do that.
But I think it also, the way I read it too, is that it allows for, just, there's a lot of people who work full time and who do work away from the district. And for like our committee meetings and stuff, they're usually like during the day, because right now that person has to come physically to the building, they can't call in unless they're out of town on business. But I think them being at work doesn't count, right? If they're, they'd still have to physically come, and I think this would allow those meetings that happen during the day to, like our committee meetings, that a person could call into that instead of having to take a half a day off of work to come to a committee meeting. That's how I read it too. And you have a legitimate concern, Angela, about the closed, and I agree that if it were that, I think we as a district could make that call to say, we're not going to allow that. It's, they're just saying the law would allow potentially that, that option, but it wouldn't mandate us to do it. It would just give it that option and then we as a district could say, we will, we allow it in these circumstances, but not in these. So that's a legitimate concern though.
But just understand that currently, a person could call in right now if they had those three things happening. For a closed session.
To a closed session?
Yes. Yeah. Okay, so.
So are we supporting it, or what do we?
Well, we, we had, just, we only had two that were, that were not.
Okay.
So we're, we would be supporting it.
Okay.
The next one, Mary, number seven, indigenous people curriculum inclusion.
I just wanted to clarify that there would be indigenous people speaking into the production of this.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you.
Just wanted to clarify from the district that there would be indigenous people participating in the development of this curriculum.
And we wouldn't know that. It's, right, again, it's the philosophy of, should IASB, this type of curriculum to be put into our law? So that whole part of it is
Later.
the next step. That, that's not what we're talking about.
Yes, I support that.
Okay.
Okay, then we're good. Dave, number eight, science of reading curriculum. It says do not adopt. And you?
Yeah, I, well, I guess I'm interested in other feedback, because I it, it seemed like it made sense to me and their only resolu, their own, the committee resolution or rationale was too restrictive?
I think it was that it's redundant to another resolution.
Oh.
There's another resolution that is being supported, so this is just saying it's redundant.
Yeah.
Yeah, I missed that.
So if you go, it's, um, which one was the one that's?
Number one.
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 Well, one, yeah, so it's, it had to be before.
Number one.
Okay, then I'm fine.
You're kind, are you with that one? Okay, so number nine, I know Susan, you and I both. My question is, is this even a thing for the health and sex ed curriculum, that they're wanting local control? Because they don't want us, they don't want to follow the national standards? But I think we're forgetting that this, so this, I think, was written before Illinois came into play. Are there going to be Illinois, there's supposed to be Illinois standards? So is this one even?
Yep.
Okay, I, I mean, I would prefer there at least be, if, if there, if it's not, if it's not going to be that, I would support it because I feel like sex education is important, that it's being taught. And I feel that the way that it is written right now, if it was to be, it's, it's giving that out when all these school districts are already doing it to begin with, because of the fact that maybe it's more progressive than what that, that community is wanting, they would just pull it completely out. And there would be no puberty education, there would be none of that. So I'm at least, I, I, I think, I'd like to find out if this is still, still valid.
Okay.
But if it is still valid, I would agree to adopt.
Okay.
That local control happens.
Okay.
So IASB is not.
No, it's asking for, it's saying that it recommends do adopt.
So we agree.
For local control, yes, but I, I'm just saying, is it even, is it even a point?
I get it.
Yes.
I wanted to make sure I didn't make a mistake on that one.
Okay, um, the next one is number 11, Mary and Susan, clean energy infrastructure, federal funding.
Sorry, I just had to see what I'm talking about here. I, I guess, I just struggled with, I'm not frankly really understanding why they didn't adopt it, because again, it's the, the idea of supporting clean energy efforts in schools from a federal perspective, I, I just wrote down why not? I don't really understand why this isn't something when climate change is such a huge issue that we need to address right now, that I think it is something that, that IASB should take a position on. So that, I mean, I, I don't have like a deep discussion here, but I just, I just didn't really understand why this wasn't.
I think part of their rationale, if I remember correctly, or from my notes, is that it's difficult to spend money on things that aren't directly related to education, so I disagree with that. Obviously, there's lots and lots of expenses that go into buildings and stuff, and I do think how districts support clean energy and care for the earth is part of educating the whole child in a community, so I also don't fully understand why they didn't support it, but I support it.
Yeah, I do as well. But some of the rest of them don't, so that's a, a pose.
So we have, we have two people.
And I, you know, just pointing out that it's referring to electric buses, is that?
That's.
No, that's not this one.
That's a different one.
It's 11. We're talking about 11.
That's 12, we're on 11.
Yep.
Okay, so.
They're similar though.
We have five that are okay with it. 12 is the electric school bus charging stations and federal funding, and Mary and Susan.
So I will say, I'll be honest, very honest and say that I, my information comes from my husband here, he is very, he's a car enthusiast, he, he drives an electric vehicle and really studies the infrastructure around electric vehicles, it's something that he's very interested in, and I, I asked him about this and what he thought, because the rationale that not all districts could do it or could implement it, you know, I said, what did, what do you think about that? And he was like, he just said, he goes, 90 to 95%, of districts could potentially implement this. And he's like, some rural districts, yeah, that might, potentially might be an issue, because like, once you get over about 200 mile range, then you might run into an issue of having to recharge, but he's like, getting this infrastructure and, you know, and I looked it up today and all the major car manufacturers are moving towards electric vehicles by anywhere from 2030 to 2040. I mean, that is what they're doing and what they're moving towards, and I'm not sure why a school association wouldn't get on board of, that's where, that's where vehicles are moving in that direction and, and there are, there's certainly infrastructure issues that have to be addressed, and there's those types of issues, but I think having a school board association put their weight behind something like this is going to help push that infrastructure to be built. And again, I just think as, as a public school system, we should be moving towards cleaner energy, you know, cleaner resources with our transportation. And I, I, the other issue I have with this, and this is going back a couple of years when they say, well, it's, we maybe can't, I'm sorry, I'm not reading fast enough here to get to it, but that it, oh, concerns over practicality for all districts lead to a decision by the committee to not recommend the resolution. Two years ago, and I weren't going to get into it, they, they recommended the adoption of a resolution that benefited one school district. And so I, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't really buy that, that it, it wouldn't necessarily apply to all districts when I think it could apply to a lot of districts. And again, it's just putting that support behind clean energy for public education because we're a huge part of a community and the ecosystem in a community.
Anybody else? So we had two, two opposing that one. 13, landscape, federal funding, Angela, Brad, Mary.
My thoughts on that were, um, so I think I, I kind of wondered with the landscaping how this wasn't covered under like city-specific needs and why it wouldn't be a more, like, why, it, it seems so local-specific rather than like federally funding that, I, yeah. Like even if maybe, you know, just to clarify more, like, maybe that's even more of a state issue as opposed to a federal issue, when I think of federal-funded things, you know, like interstate highways, like from one state to another, but when you're looking at landscaping, that seems like a very local need and local funding would support that.
So I, I can read Brad, what he said, I would vote do not adopt, while I agree in the concept with the objective, I don't believe that IASB should be lobbying the Congress of the United States, this is similar to my position on why they're, they're not, why they're already not with 11 and 12, they don't feel like we should be lobbying in the United States.
I admit, it doesn't make sense that they would support this one and not the other ones. I totally agree with that and I, the only reason I'm going, I recommend do adopt again, because I, I think it is something that the federal government needs to be investing in, and amongst other, many, many other things in the public education, but that's just, I, I, like I said, I supported all of them, I, I agree with Brad that it doesn't make sense. It, I, I think it is a little contradictory to the other two, but, but I support it.
I can go either way, so it's not one that I'm, I, I look at this and I think, well, it's asking for things like stormwater and, you know, that, that could end up being flooding in schools and, you know, I mean, I, I can see how it would, it can impact actual schools. I.
I just, I don't see.
Do we have support, I think, did we?
What's that?
Is it, do we have support from the majority of the board? Is that where we're going?
We have support from the majority of the board.
Okay.
So what was my vote on that?
Wait, what?
Not support.
Okay.
Um, the next one is child safe gun storage.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go down this path here, but it, it's the same, I mean, I will say, it's the same language that was, that was last year. It failed, it was appealed, this is, I know the woman who wrote this, it's not noted on here, but she did appeal it. They, they, the district did appeal it, it failed last year, I don't see it going through again. The one note that I just wanted to make is that I, some feedback that came out of discussion last year was to talk about the belief statement as opposed to lobbying straight for legislation on this, because I do think this, this does absolutely impact schools and it is something that IASB should be lobbying for, but most people didn't, but they, but I think there was some discussion around amending the belief statement, that there is a belief statement around this right now. And I had actually written an amended amendment to that statement and I had told Chris I was working on it and then I kind, I realized I got in my own head and I backed away from it and I said, I don't think it's strong enough. And then when I was getting ready for research of this, I went back and re, reread it and I was like, it was actually pretty good, like, and so I'm kind of kicking myself that I didn't, but I just wanted to make a note that probably next year I will, you know, bring to the board a revision to the belief statement around this. And I think that might have a better shot of getting through, so I just wanted to make that comment. But I will put it down as opposed.
The next one is Susan, you have downed school code review.
Oh, I, was I the only one that said that?
Yeah.
Okay. I just, I, I guess, I just, I agree with the concept of it. I understand what they're saying, that they felt like it was too broad, but I just, I made a note that like, this isn't already done? Like, I feel like, you know, that there, there, it's something that should actively happen, but if I'm the only one, I'm not gonna take up time on it.
21, Angela, is the position statement, funding special education programs?
Yep, I just had a question on it. I'm not opposed. So when it, and this is, so, so the second bullet that says, Chelsea changes in current practice to fund local districts for special educational professional personnel at 51% of the prior year's average salary for such professionals. Is that what's typical now? I guess, what does that mean?
Dr. Schiller, do you know if that's? So 21.
That's not what's happening currently, that's what the law says really should be happening.
The law is saying it should be happening, but it's not happening.
Correct. IDA has never been funded fully to the level it is supposed to be funded, so this is just arguing for full funding in the way that the law reads.
Okay, thank you. So I agree, I mean, I.
You're okay?
Yep.
And then the last one is Angela, Physical and Mental Health of Students.
Yeah, number 23. I wasn't exactly sure what, so it's just changing, it's just adding physical and mental health, and then the dental and physical examinations. Is the, is the thought that, well, so, sorry, I'm reading again, is the?
They're just broadening the definition of health to include physically and mentally. I think the previous belief statement just said health with no descriptor, so it's incorporating both physical and mental health.
Okay, so, but not suggesting that we advocate for parents to have mental health exams for all their children. Okay. Then that was my question, thank you.
I think it also included five-year-olds getting.
I'm sorry?
I think it also included five-year-olds, kindergartners, getting eye exams or something like that.
Right, I think that was already in there, and they were adding.
I thought that was an addition.
It was kindergarten for vision.
Ongoing comprehensive vision dental and physical examinations. Thank you.
That's fine.
All right, Susan.
So can I just quickly, if you guys want to scroll back to the top here of there, I just want to make sure I have all these correct. Can I just quickly go through? And keep in mind, don't get confused, like, if it says do adopt, we support it. If it says do not adopt, it's oppose. So we're not saying like we oppose the recommendation, we're opposing. What the, yeah.
Yes.
So, okay.
Two is the, two is the only one.
I think two is the only one.
Yep.
So two, oh, all right, right. So whatever, okay, so two is the only one, all right, so we don't have to do that then?
Yeah.
Okay. So two is the only one that we, I will vote oppose. Where am I here? Okay. And then everything else aligns with the recommendation of the committee, correct?
Yeah. Well, we, it just asked on number nine to find out if it's even.
Yes, yeah, I have that.
Yep. Okay. Thank you for doing that, Susan. All right, next is Written Reports, which are provided for information only, was the monthly financial reports, FOIA report, Board Communication Logs, Citizen Advisory Committee Report, Board Committee Reports, there was attached, was the Teaching and Learning Committee, and the Equity proactive practice committee were attached. Are there any other reports from board members? The only thing I would like to share is that the foundation 30th anniversary is having a fundraiser, they're celebrating their 30th year, and the last Sunday of October at 302 West to support and celebrate their anniversary. Topics for future discussion, 2021 levy, 2020, 2021 audit. Our next regular meeting is November 10th here at Hubble. Announcements, so the October 27th, which was typically marked for our committee of the whole, this would no longer be a board meeting, but it would be a community engagement opportunity. So we will not be having an official board meeting that night. Public comments, we have two, and they, the same guidelines as we previously stated for public comments. First is Jeanne Ives. Mr. Long will be timing.
Well, you certainly had a lot to discuss tonight. Some of it is a little bit of alarm, alarming to me. Let's be clear here, the comprehensive sex ed bill would be detrimental to all the students in this district. We've done it fine, the way that we've done it right now, there's no need to go down this comprehensive sex ed path, and if you do, then I would suggest that you spend two years, just like you have on Portrait of a Graduate, educating parents on comprehensive sex ed. Now, this bill is so egregious that it actually says in the legislation that you can't actually give parents notification of an opt-out form. That's a problem. They're trying to hide this from parents. So you spend two years on Portrait of a Graduate, you better spend two years going through the National Sex Education Standards, which are pornographic in nature. When they say that you have to teach sixth through eighth graders oral and anal sex, that's pornographic, but that is in the standards, and you will be required to teach that if you go down that path. I highly suggest you don't do any of that, and that you push back vigorously. In fact, the bill should be repealed, and in your, in your resolutions to the Illinois Association of School Boards should be to repeal its entirety SB 818. That's what should happen here. Now, number two, you know, it's a little concerning that you guys don't have a resolution going forward that says, you know what? The Illinois, our resolution is that the Illinois Association of School Boards should disassociate from the National School Board Association, which has made a politicized statement in saying that people who speak before the board are potentially domestic terrorists, even going so far as to say that the Patriot Act, the Patriot Act may have to be looked into. I mean, that's outrageous. That is preposterous language, and the fact that you're going to pay the Illinois Association of School Board to be part of the National School Board Association is ridiculous. The resolution you should bring to them is that we're going to get out of the NSBA, and we're going to withdraw from the IASB until in such time as they revoke a letter that would say that any parent is a domestic terrorist at all, and it can say that they're going to use the Patriot Act. It's just crazy. In fact, part of what they said in their letter, the NSBA letter specifically, oh, they said that it would be a terrorist idea that other groups are posting watch lists against school boards and spreading misinformation that boards are adopting critical race theory curriculum. Well, that's very subject to interpretation, and posting school board meetings is not a problem. You are in a politicized environment right now, and you need to back away if you expect us to report, be respectful. Lastly, and finally.
Thank you, Ms. Ives. Next is Kathleen Murphy.
Um, you need to tell parents how to opt out of that.
Thank you, Ms. Ives.
Graduation requirement, that is ridiculous.
Kathleen Murphy?
Good evening. I want to talk to you, I wasn't going to speak until we brought up the sex ed curriculum. I think that you have heard from a lot of parents about this because we're concerned about some of the examples that we've seen float around, some of the attitudes that exist in academia towards parents who have traditional values, and towards, you know, they act as if you want to raise your kids with traditional values if they don't know the exact moral equivalence of every form of sexuality by the time they're in fourth grade, you are somehow doing them harm. Those are the attitudes, those are the messages, and that's where a lot of this curriculum comes from. If you haven't seen the, the materials that Jeanne referenced, we're happy to send over some copies. I appreciate that you highlighted that ISB said they will allow schools to choose their own curriculum, and that you're laying out a process for choosing a curriculum that involves community input. But let's be honest, do we really trust the Illinois State Board of Education to allow local rule anymore? We've seen how they operate. You're allowed to make your own decisions about masks until and unless you don't make the decision the governor likes, and his hand-picked school board will come down and eliminate local rules. So you're allowed to choose your sex ed curriculum until you pick one that doesn't satisfy their far-left political agenda. Small and private schools who didn't comply with the mask rules were stripped of their accreditation and their, their sports status, they came down with everything they had on them. So, I mean, maybe at your delegate convention, submit a proposal that ISB backed the hell off local school districts. Their record is not great, and I would encourage you all to use your platforms to stand up to the state's overreach before we get even further away from community-run schools and further toward state-run schools. Also, Alicia spoke eloquently about the effort by the National School Board Association to label parents domestic terrorists. This is something that you as a school board should speak up about. You have a very divided community, and they should understand where you as a board fall here. Do you see parents as domestic terrorists? Because not saying anything to, to rebuke it, not to rebuke it, allows the characterization to stand, and it hardens the lines of division that exist. Parents who have stood up against the new sex ed standards, CRT, mask and vaccine mandates, get the message from you saying nothing that you agree with the characterization. Parents on the other side who are for mask and vaccine mandates get, have even more justification to vilify their neighbors. A well-reasoned rebuke of that characterization is not only reasonable, but it is necessary if you want to heal the divide that exists in District 200. Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Okay, there being no further action to come before the board, an open session, I ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booton.
Second.
Second by Dr. Yaboah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.